Has everyone had a chance to, uh, look at the last two meetings? The minutes from the last two meetings?
Okay.
Are these working?
Oh, this for me.
Oh. Okay.
Lucky guy.
Well, let's maintain the motion.
Okay, we open the meeting? They said Bill opened the meeting at seven o'clock. I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from June seventeen and June twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Continued hearing, Strawberry Fields.
Strawberry Fields asked.
Continued hearing, long burnt, long built homes, notice of intent, Hunter said.
Okay, continue tonight.
Uh, they, did they request a continuance? Did they actually request a continuance?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause they didn't reach out to me.
Strawberry Fields?
No, lawn built.
No, 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 we're talking Strawberry Fields.
We need a motion to, um, make a continuance.
Okay, I'll, I'll, uh, make a motion that we continue the hearing for Strawberry Fields until our August meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, when is that date for August?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Okay.
Nineteen, Lisa?
Yeah.
Right in your minutes. Long built homes, same procedure.
Uh, but they didn't actually request a continuance. They're just not here. So.
So you have to continue.
Well, I wanted to bring something up on that.
Well, you certainly can.
Okay. So here we are, um, a month after we picked the peer review, um, ecosystems and reviewing the wetlands, niches reviewing the storm water and engineering. Ecosystems has started reviewing LEC's redelineated site, so the site is redelineated. However, there are definitely changes from the original. So the submitted plan, as you remember, was based on the two thousand four, two thousand three delineation. And I said, no, 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 we can't go on that, we need it redelineated. Now, here we are, they filed the notice of intent with us, and we are waiting for, um, the redelineation, which shouldn't be, that should all be taken care of in an AMRA. It is not designed by Dayton Conservation Commission. So now the peer review service, um, consultants are reviewing a project that needs to be redesigned because the wetlands have all, have changed.
The wetlands of what?
The wetlands have changed.
Yes.
On the site, I mean, it was twenty years ago.
Considerably.
Right, so I suggested to Brandon, Fiona, who's our peer review, I suggested that they withdraw the application and resubmit when they're ready. Because each month we come back, it's the same thing right now. And then, I didn't hear back, I haven't heard from Evan, and I haven't heard, only thing I suggested to Brandon was, if they don't want to withdraw, because they paid a fee, then why don't we table it? So that's what I would recommend to you guys, that we table this project till October, till they can get their act together. You know what I mean?
I do.
We continue it to a month, and just keep on continuing until they can blow.
Well, but it's more than.
I notice from the, the plan that, uh, I got email plan of the potential wetland, a lot of differences in, uh, in what they're going to lose as far as, uh, uh, outlook.
Yeah, so the project's going to be redesigned, it's going to be changed completely, you know? Um, at this point, I, I feel like we should just table it maybe for two, give, I, you know.
Well, you can always, you can always invite them to come in and give us an update.
Of course.
At the next meeting.
But they're not here tonight.
Yeah, no, I mean, for next meeting, you could say, would you like to come in and give us an update?
That's why we should just continue it, and when they come here, then.
Keep a surprise.
Tell them what we need.
Yeah, bec- because it's more, uh, more than what we need at this point. It's, they are still figuring out their feasibility.
Correct.
Which, we need action items. We need, the commission needs items to be able to make a decision on, you know what I mean?
They're gonna have to submit a revised plan anyway, because it doesn't match anywhere near the original plan.
Of course. So, of cour- you know, there's gonna be plenty of revisions, but month after month, do we wanna, or we just table it till October?
So we either need a re- need a revised plan or a new notice of intent.
We can talk about that at the next meeting, we should just continue it tonight.
So we're not gonna get a revised plan by the next meeting, is what I'm trying to say, because.
Well, it's not fair to the effort, they're not here.
Well, I know, but they didn't even reach out to say, I'm not gonna be here, so. That's the part I don't understand, they're not even here.
Yeah.
They knew there was a meeting.
When was the last time you had contact with them?
Last meeting.
Last meeting. I guess we could always just, just follow up one time and say, you weren't there at the meeting? Do you have any updates, you have anything?
I just said, ecosystems is reviewing the delineation.
That's the last of it?
As of yesterday.
So, I mean, this plan is gonna be drastically changed then?
Yes, it is.
So, if it's gonna be drastically changed, we should request a nu- a full new notice of intent.
We'll meet halfway and table it, I mean, I, they're gonna lose all their application fees if we, if we request a new filing.
Um, but if they were to get here i- i- next month, is tabling it for a month sufficient?
No way, for that site?
Okay, 'cause they got to come in with new plans and all the rest.
New plans, new drainage calculations.
Okay, I see what you, so, um, so if we did at least September, that would be, uh, that would.
Yeah, the less we hear from them in the meantime, maybe you could say, we'll table it till September or October, unless we hear from them in the meantime.
I still think that we should continue it for a month. Insist that they come and then tell them what we need. Not continue it for two months and then they're wondering why. It should be discussed right here with us. Not between us, but with them and us.
Yeah, but they also should show up or email us.
They, well, I, I, I agree with Charlie, just so we can get it, yeah, let's, just, uh.
Make the motion, Charlie.
I make a motion that we continue Hunter's Hill meeting until, uh, August nineteenth.
What was the date, Charlie?
Eight nineteen.
Eight nineteen?
Eight nineteen. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who seconded?
Jim.
Jim Sousa?
Yeah.
Forest Hills, same procedure.
Okay, so Joshua Glass is here, um, I had a initial conversation with him, we've got, we had two estimate for peer review. So we got an estimate from Green International, they're all in your folders. Green International is the consultant that the planning board is using to review this, the storm water. And then we got an estimate from Beta, Beta obviously reviewed the AMRA, um, for this project. So, you know, both are substantially different. And, you know, in talking with Marty Nova, she realized that she may not, she didn't have the drainage calculations at the time, and she was doing this scope and estimate. So.
You sure you have access to them now, have her look at the.
Okay.
Lisa, will you say?
I'll send it to Marty right now.
I sent it to her, of course.
You did?
Yeah.
Lisa, when you say she doesn't have the drainage calculations, do you mean that she?
For storm water review.
She wasn't told to do it, you mean?
She knew they would be, she thought they would still be coming in. Unfortunately, the package I sent her, and I sent Shaheen from Green International, didn't include that. It included the notice of intent without the drainage calculations and without the plans. Today she asked me for the plans. Um, Shaheen from Green International already had the plans, already had the drainage calculations, because they were doing for the planning board. So they're two completely separate estimates, actually. Uh, Green International is twelve thousand plus three thousand to review the, uh, I said, hey, you know, you've also got to review the basin in Taunton, 'cause that was a discussion I had with Conservation Agency. There's one basin on the Taunton side with, it's just part, it's part of the same system. Um, so he said, add three thousand to that, and I said, Owen, you also maybe want to include, because the other consultant included two site visits. So he added the two site visits, he said would be included for free. So his estimate's at fifteen thousand, Marty's estimate was at six thousand six hundred. But Marty didn't include the drainage calculations. I think once we get the drainage calculations.
Did she say roughly what the, that would cost an additional?
She said she needed to see him. So he just sent them to her, and maybe by the end of the meeting, she'll have him, yeah, sir.
Even then, I don't think it would come close to that. Fifteen thousand? She's at six thousand six hundred?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. A- as. So as the party ultimately needs to pay the bill, even though we have no relationship, I shared with, the commission previously with Lisa, I'm, I would almost be willing to absorb the additional expense on Green International, because I'm, I'm concerned that as the applicant, having two different engineers reviewing this on behalf of the town will put us in an awkward and somewhat impossible to manage issue, not impossible, difficult to manage situation if two different consultants from the town are giving two different opinions, and we don't control the relationship between the two of them in any way, because they both work for separate boards. So, again, as the entity paying the bill via fifty-three G, I think that the town having one engineer to talk to our one engineer would certainly create a much more fluid and consistent process in terms of getting the project, you know, reviewed and responded to, and then the town would have one representative giving you feedback, and as opposed to two potentially conflicting, um, review. So, I, I think we would be comfortable absorbing the additional expense, which is probably not gonna be ten thousand dollars, but it might be a couple thousand dollars, because I think long term, by having one engineering firm rather than two, the overall cost will probably be less.
I just wanted to say one thing. But in all fairness to Beta, we didn't provide the same information that Green International had. So, I feel like we can give it a little more time, maybe she can come up with it tonight, or maybe we can have another meeting in a week, so that you're not waiting a whole month, um, to get the other estimate. But the other part of it is, Green International didn't include any subsequent reviews. That's just one initial review.
No, and, and I hear you, and I, um, I just feel like logically, what I'm concerned is gonna happen is Outback is gonna get feedback from Beta, then they're gonna get feedback from Green, and they're gonna need to respond to both, neither of whom is really in charge of the other. And we could easily blow thousands and thousands and tens of thousands of dollars trying to respond if they aren't on the same page. And could do something for the planning board that works for them, but then doesn't work for the commission. And I, and so, I, I think having a joint, you know, in other, similarly in other places where we had projects that, for example, straddled water, we've, they've created joint commissions, but that wouldn't, I think, be necessary here. I just, I worry that having those two different groups is just gonna create a headache for you guys, headache for the planning board, a headache for us, so I'm just saying that I actually think having one engineering firm ultimately would probably be awash financially. Um, and Green International's probably gonna be a little bit more expensive. But we're already funding them through the planning board and that fifty-three G, and, you know, at least if one engineer is talking to one engineer, we, we have one set of facts to look from comments.
But Lisa said that doesn't even count any further, uh, review of those plans. So if they came back with something, we're talking fifteen already. I don't, I don't really get what you were saying, where you're saying, uh.
So, they're both gonna have to do the same amount of work, right? In essence, and so the question is, who's probably charging more per hour? That's generally been my experience with consultants, is, you know, they're probably both gonna, you know, need to review the plan, do the application, have X number of meetings, have X number of rounds of review. My guess is that the hourly fee for Green International is a little bit more than Beta, which is why the rest.
So you're gonna pay three times as much?
I don't think we'll ever pay three times as much, and you can laugh at me for saying that. And, and maybe waiting a week is, you know, is worthwhile. I just, inefficient processes always end up being more expensive, and I worry that it also creates a, a worse product for both the town and for us, that's my concern. And, and the other thing is, I think in, most likely, these engineers are gonna be involved for a while, would be my guess, as the project rolls forward. So, that's a lot of money, but long term, it might not be as much if it's, 'cause every, here's what I.
You're making constructions to provision.
Yeah, and, and which could be a different group, but here's what I picture happening, right? Every time Beta has a com- they're calling Outback, and Outback's calling Green, and Green's calling back Outback, and Outback's calling back to Beta, and then Beta has a conversation with Green, and nobody tells Outback, and they didn't know something, I just, I, it, it's like any sort of environment where you've got three different entities, and I, that's, that's ultimately what I think could be problematic for the town and for us. But I'm, I'm, I'm okay, like, you know, waiting a week or two, but I think I'm probably, I'm probably going to say the same thing, because my guess is that the difference is gonna be that Beta's got a lower hourly rate and Green's more, but I'm hoping the queue of the time ends up being less.
Yeah, that's, the other way to look at all this too is, why not have a third set of eyes? Can't the engineers come to some agreement?
Okay, I, I'm gonna put my two cents in. Uh, here we have a company that has been, uh, very accurate with their information with us. They have shown interest in the project, but have not been given the full information to give an accurate report. I think we owe it to a little extra time for Beta, now that they have the information, not the information, but the goal for this project, that we give them the, uh, the option of continuing their, uh, pricing for this project. I do, yeah.
Was that a motion, Jim?
Uh, no, it wasn't a motion, it was just a thought, but I will make a motion that, that we, uh, continue this, um, hearing now. Can we, we, well, we have to agree if, if we want, uh, if we're gonna have another meeting in a week or two.
Okay.
If we meet just for that, yeah, that's fine.
Um, two weeks?
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
Okay, I move that we continue the hearing for two weeks till we get. So that we can get a, uh, a pricing from Beta, since they have shown interest in, uh, um, in fini- not, in, in this project. I know, I, you're gonna, you're gonna write that up, okay, Charlie?
Yeah, 'cause we did send it out to them, and in all fairness, they went through that whole process, and they didn't have the rest of the information.
That is, that is, I would appreciate someone treating me with the same level of respect, so I get that, that's a fair way of looking at it.
Okay, Charlie seconded?
He did?
He did.
Thanks, Charlie.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, continue till.
Opposed?
Okay, so that means we have a special meeting?
Seven twenty-nine.
Seven twenty-nine. At seven PM right here.
Lisa, would you go with the delivery for one moment, can you click on that link and make sure you can at least.
Sure.
Clearway.
Okay. So, all right. There, Bill.
Yeah. There. It's the most recent one, right?
Wait a moment, until she finishes with, uh. Wait a minute, until she finishes with Jason now.
Thank you.
So she can be tuned into this. All set, Lisa?
All set.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Clearway.
Back in there.
Just like this, uh, present right now. Should we present? Three hours, yeah.
Yeah, that's why you're here.
Okay. All right, David Allen, Clearway, uh, to the Williams Street Solar Project. Uh, also meeting tonight, Tim Sullivan from TRC, Morgan Haldeman, Kelly Pur, and Chris Ryan, with Meridian, Anthony, and. Now, it's been a while since we've been in, since the project was created for you, I, I haven't been in for you before. And I think when it was last year, maybe you had a different owner. Is that the last?
Yeah, it was Forefront.
It was Forefront, so sometime between two thousand and eighteen and now, Clearway acquired the project from Forefront. And in that interval, uh, since then, there's also been a change to the town storm water review process. So even though we had adverse conditions, and we thought we were set, or maybe we may have been set.
Sign and sheet.
It's not, it's not, it's not.
Yep.
There's another new sign and way through.
Where's the sign and sheet?
Sign and sheet, Lisa.
Thank you.
Sorry. Sorry, David.
Sorry.
So, so, uh, we've, we've been doing some work at the Crowbar area over the last several months, and it's resulted in a few changes in the project. And also had some changes in our own, to the project. So we thought we'd come in and give the commission an update on those changes. And then, once we've had a chance to sort of absorb them, and understand all the Q and A that we need to do, and make sure that they're, that was clear, we're gonna have to talk about what, if any, next steps we are with the commission for the project. Before, then we get just a quarter, the changes are minor enough for a certain type that maybe a lot of the project will report, or it's a subject where it's. All right, so that's the question for the commission, and, um, these guys are getting sent.
And guys, we have a pa- I have a packet in there, the email correspondence. Email correspondence that I've had with them, it's in there, so you might want to read it over.
Yeah, there's a letter with a TRC letterhead on it that summarizes latest changes in the history of the project.
Yeah, it's actually an email format, yeah. Do you have the copy of the table printed at all? You do, great.
Oh, yep.
I have to need a real copy of it.
Thank you. It's the same thing that's in the email, I'm sure.
Lisa, did you just get a TRC letter? Just to show you that, it was attachment, it's when it has the table on it.
Oh. Yeah, that's it. So the letter, um, I printed the email out probably on the.
Is there a technical place where the easiest or best are everywhere?
Is there a camera that we can make sure?
Uh, yeah, where, where would be best, so we could see it?
If that is summary, and then if you send your email attached to it, it's probably somewhere.
You can point that way, yeah.
I got that one, I got that one there.
I'll give you this, I'm sure we have it. But we're sorry to make sure the cameras and the commission and the audience can all see. We got the storm water changes. And then we've got the changes in jurisdictional areas.
Oh, yeah, I did see this, yeah, I did see it.
Okay.
It's been a long day. I'll keep this up.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, maybe I'll set things up a little bit. So, sort of two categories that the changes fall into. Uh, there are those that are what I call interior to the site, mostly related to storm water, not within or overlapping any jurisdictional areas, without really bothering, without any impacts. And then there's changes that have to do with jurisdictional areas. Those are all reductions in impact, just to kind of set it up a little bit. But we'll walk through those, the first set is gonna be storm water related, primarily interior to the site.
Okay, could, could, um, you kind of highlight William Street on that map? And, uh, um, give a couple locations on either side? I know the addresses are here, and, uh, I've got, uh, in mind a couple, you know, locations, but I want to make sure that I am accurate on it.
Sure, so, um, this was the approved land from, from twenty eighteen, and what the forefoot will go, and this is the, this is the current, Clearway set, they're both, uh, they're both oriented the same way. William Street's gonna be on the, um, on the right side of, of the, of the data move.
Now, is that all found laid up front?
Correct, so the, so the, um, the original farms greenhouse will be right here, and the, um, the water tower, I guess, is another landmark, that's, that's, that's about here. So, um, so you, you'd be, if you were familiar with the Urujo Farms parking area, you'd be heading up the, this road has the right side as you're looking at the, the, the firm building.
Okay.
I think that's for, in the, the parking areas, they have a parking area here, and a parking area here as well, if that, if that further, if that further helps.
So if you like, I'll just go through quickly the storm water changes that we've incorporated, uh, based on the review of the storm water commission.
So the original, the original design was basically the same as what you're seeing here. The first thing we were asked to do was, this, um, exist, this basin over here, because of the original soil tests that were done in the area, the reviewer, uh, Todd, for the storm water commission, was a little skeptical about the, the way the groundwater was lined, so they were, they asked us to re, to redo this basin, basically, it was a lot smaller and a lot deeper, so we pushed it back out into the site here and made it shower. Um, so when we did that, we had to relocate a couple of panels, we swapped some from the end of this row over here, vice versa. So that was sort of the first thing we did for storm water. The next thing, uh, we had, they had asked us to look at, uh, to look at the drainage model maps, and he was kind of, uh, I don't wanna say skeptical, but he had some questions about the way the, the subcatchment drainage areas had been divided up, so we took a look at it. There were some changes, nothing really fundamental to the, to the thing, it was sort of like, oh, we think the break here is here, and they, they thought it was there, kind of thing, so. We presented some updated drainage maps to the board, they, he agreed, and then we went forward, and we sort of created a supplemental storm water calculations report to supplement what TRC had originally done. And, uh, we, then we sort of went from there. One of the things that, another thing that he had an issue with in the original, um, uh, design was, he thought, um, 'cause, uh, these basins didn't really exist in the old design. They're very shallow, so we came up with some very shallow depressions, these are only about twelve to eighteen inches deep. The idea being that the existing soil testing that was done, there was some soil borers initially done in the initial geotech, uh, report, showed that the soils here were roughly a fifty percent sand composition, it's like a lomi sand, it was, yeah. So, at the time, we felt, okay, then that would be sufficient to be able to get some infiltration to knock down the peat grades, because before, the site as a whole, on all the design storms, were meeting or beating the peat grades as required by, uh, DEP. But in some of the larger storms, this particular subcatchment was going slightly over, and he just, as sort of, um, velvet suspenders approach, wanted us to try to come up with something. So, um, that will, these will be confirmed, um, in a week. So, um, that will, these will be confirmed, um, if we, they're going to require us to do some firm soil testing in this area, um, before anything's constructed to verify the, the, uh, original borings that were there. So we had to.
The storm water committee is?
Yeah.
Storm water.
Yep.
Okay.
So we did these here, um, up by the entrance. They, um, one concern that they have, this sort of an existing vision where, because there's an existing gravel drive over here. And I guess in large storms, still get some water kind of rushing down here and deposit some sediment out in the road. So what they've done out there, if you go out there now, they sort of have an ad hoc, like, little divot that goes across the road that will kind of intercept water and send it down into here. So what we're proposing is, um, just to sort of formalize what's there, we're going to have a stone line swale on this side of the road to intercept all the water that's coming down. And then we're going to have a, we're proposing a water bar, which is basically, uh, it's different types of water bars, but the one they're proposing is, uh, it has sort of a, um, pressure treated wood base. It's a little like a rubber blade that sticks out of the ground about that much. So that way, their equipment and vehicles can run over it and just snaps back up. And so it'll just intercept some of the water and direct it, direct it to the interaction that's already going. The idea being that if any water comes down here, it's only from the stretch of the driveway. Um, as far as any changes or anything in, in your jurisdiction, the only thing that, that they asked us to do, the existing contours on, uh, the existing driveway here, if you look at the existing topography, most of them do have a slight crown. It's sort of irregular, when you go through here, there's some ruts and then some other things. But in general, in this area, this sort of crown, in the initial, uh, approved cross section for that piece of driveway, it was designed as sort of a flat. And, uh, Todd felt that if we left it that way, we might be changing some of the drainage patterns in and around this little rail pool. So they asked us to put slight crowns to, to match. And we're railing it to match the existing centerline grades that are there. So that way, we're not really adding a lot of fill. Once you get out to the shoulders, you can come right out and go right down. So we're not, we're trying to limit what's there as much as possible, but just to sort of clean it up and formalize it. Um, the fire chief and the building inspector went out here, well, the fire chief had asked that we widen it instead of sixteen foot wide that I guess the previous design had, he wanted twenty foot. Then they went out and walked through here, they decided that it was okay to leave it as approved at sixteen feet. Uh, they feel that they'll have enough room to maneuver vehicles through and that sort of thing. So this hasn't changed. The driveway here is basically what it was, the vegetation management area is staying as it was with the same limits and that sort of thing. So in the plan set now, you will see a sheet of cross sections they asked us to cut. We went out and did some additional on the ground survey in this area and this area here. Uh, and we've cut series cross sections every twenty five feet through this section of the road. It's in the, I think it's the last sheet of the plan set. Uh, so we have that, and we also have some extra, um, spot shots in and around this area because there is a natural low point right around here. So again, we wanted to leave it as it was. So we also worked with Mr.
Ferry.
Mr. Ferry.
Ferry, yeah.
Yeah, to talk about what type of stone we were proposing. Because there is a, there is a, in a, in like a hundred year storm, there is a small amount of water. The water, when it, storms naturally wants to go this way. It goes this way first, but in the larger storms, this low point swath grade is just slightly higher than over here. So the water will, in like a hundred year storm, when you have like eight inches of rain, it will start to top over the driveway here. So we, we proposed a twenty foot wide swath, ten, ten or fifteen feet on either side of the low point, was specing a larger stone, because the fear was that regular gravel would just get washed away. And I think it's only about point two C a fast that crosses the, the driveway in a hundred year storm. So it's not a whole lot, but it's there. So this, if the stone is bigger, it's like a four inch minus a gallon of stone.
Like a ripper, small ripper.
Yeah, yeah, like that. And it's still drivable, uh, but the only people that are going to be driving, once the place is built, the only people that are going to be driving out here are maintenance workers, like twice a day. So it'll be virtual, no vehicle trips going in and out. And then they also asked us, we made some changes, we'll see in the rush control plans. Uh, we initially proposed the construction entrance, the stone construction pad entrance up near the road. But since customers do come in and they go to either the left or the right to access the gravel parking areas, we pushed it back to roughly parallel face of the building. Uh, so that way, uh, people can still come in and out and not have to worry about driving over that. Uh, the, the, it's close enough to the road, so the vehicle's coming out of the, so there's a wash pit there. They can still clean out the tires and, and that sort of thing.
About when my kids were young, we used to go back, back for hayride back there. Turn that blowie head thing.
So the water bar that you're going to put there with the rubber, they'll be able to blow us snow over that without a break in? Because I know they're going to get back to get a service and water tank.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've, I personally have proposed these on other solar sites, um, and they've held up okay. I mean, they do require maintenance over time, they will need to be replaced, but, um.
That is going to have to be covered.
Well, I wanted to have something that wasn't just made out of like a stone hump or something, because that's just going to get a lot of weight in like the first.
How long does that last, brothers?
These, probably, uh, what I've seen, like six to eight years. But like I said, they will, over time, will need to be, uh, and again, I mean, uh, the contractor may come up with a different solution that might be a little bit more durable. Let that open, so they come up with a better idea, you can look at incorporating that stuff. Other than sort of digging a trench across it. Plus, they didn't want to get into like piping and all this other stuff, because then it's like a whole other drainage project from the front end. They want to try to keep like a minimal solution though, that's still a lot of water going this way.
That's close with the, with the garage is all that, that area right there is fairly close where that water bar is going to be. The buildings are fairly close right there.
Yeah, I, yeah, but the existing water bar or the, well, the trench over there is like roughly here. I pushed it back a little bit to get away, because I know that vehicles can come up and they go around here.
Yeah.
So. So that's basically the, in a nutshell, what we've done with the storm. Most of it, I'd say ninety five percent is outside of any weapon or frontal pool buffers. Uh, and the only, again, the only thing to do is we clarified the grades up here by cross sections. And also, uh, the original plans, we were asked to address sort of, uh, sort of spark and face solution for any creatures who might want to cross between the weapons at night. So, uh, there's a detail on there, it involves sort of gaps in the silvers that allow things to crawl out and go every some of the feet.
It's a good design, I thought. These guys keep up here.
So it allows the, um, and it, it says in the thing, the final locations will be determined in the field once they're setting it up. But it will allow, uh, several entry points for whatever wants to cross the road to, to do it. And, but still allow the setup to get collected and not go into the weapons. So, and once the site is done, they'll just leave it out of the driveway, they'll just cross over.
I have a question, how many acres are being cleared?
What's two? The two, the.
How many acres are being cleared?
The two, the two solar pods that we were, approximately nineteen and a half acres. And then just to, uh, reiterate, the changes that Chris was describing were the work, the additional survey work and the stone specification within the jurisdictional area. No change in footprint or impact there. It's just a clarification of what material to use, and then extra survey to confirm my knowledge. That's the extent of it. I did. And then, um, we have a few spots where there have been design changes that actually reduce, um, reduce impacts. And they, they fall into two categories. There are, um, what I guess you kind of call footprint impact, so it will actually reduce the footprint of the project. And then, if you look at the table that's attached to the letter, um, we, the left hand side, um, is the table that was in the original community of the roads intent or approved through eventually through the third party cross, through the third party review process at the time. So we started with that table and, and updated it. Um, part of what was described originally were, I guess, a lot of structures that were within jurisdictions of the solar panels were called out. The extent of road improvements were, were called out specifically in there. So they were, you know, potentially within, you know, potentially within areas that were already going to be cleared by trees, but, um, they were specifically called out. So we tried to keep that same format. The first category of the two, uh, two areas were, I guess, one larger, two, um, precipitating reasons why some tree clearings were removed from the project. The original project had, um, the original project had two electrical, um, uh, electrical lines that left the site and tied into, you know, tied into the street. There was an overhead line that came this way and crossed through, this is a weapon here, weapon D, D I four. And then there's also a line that runs down, runs down the access forever. The, um, the project was redesigned so that all of the electricity now leaves no longer road. And this overhead line that crossed the weapon eventually is no longer part of the project. So that removes approximately, I think it was two thousand and sixty square feet of wetland impact from tree clearing that was originally approved. And that was all the wetland, direct B V W impact associated with the project. So that's no longer proposed. And, uh, and, and buffer zone on both sides, uh, both sides, um, both sides of the line. Additionally, maybe hard to see from, from some of the, sort of further away. The original fence line was, I guess, what I would say, um, shaped like a staircase. Um, the, the fence line is outside the buffer zone, so this is, obviously, the buffer zone here. But, um, in, in, to accommodate vehicle traffic around the panels for service and in future operations management, the fence line was actually straightened. So when you straighten it, it had the effect of pulling the fence line closer to the panels, which then in turn pulled the tree line, uh, or the, or the final tree line, once all the trimming occurs, closer to the panel. So in addition to, uh, buffer zone tree clearing that was associated with the overhead line, that's no longer proposed, um, an amount of, um, buffer zone clearing that was originally proposed outside the fence is no longer proposed because the fence was shifted. That total for buffer zone clearing is about fourteen thousand square feet, um, of, of buffer zone impact that's no longer proposed. So that would be, um, you know, area, area along here. And then, um, there was a small piece from the line across the, from the line across the, that, that. So that's like, I guess, the footprint reduction, um, reduction, um, discussion. And then additionally.
I have a question.
Sure.
The line along the path that is going to go above the path, how much clearing? How, not clearing, but canopy are we going to lose?
Along the, along, along this section here? It was, it's shown on, on the plan sets, it's, um, I can pull the number. It's either seventeen thousand or fourteen thousand square feet is what the vegetation management area is to, total.
Of, okay, so.
So did I say seventeen, that's fourteen hundred or seventeen hundred, sorry?
Oh, okay, okay.
So that's, that's the to, that's the total area. I, I have.
That's a good, tough one, it's ten floors.
Thank you for, thank you.
I thought, oh boy, I'm glad I asked that question.
And I felt a little bit shocked. It's, it's, and it's, it's, I, 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 I'm sure I can pull the number, and I, I.
Yeah, can we get that number?
Yeah, I don't recall how much is on this side of the street and how much is on the, or on this side of the road, how much is on this side of the road. It's less, it's less on this side of the road. Um, most of that, you, you know, most of the, um, the area, the shoulders along the road have been worked, you know, worked at points in time and had trees removed. It's, um, uh, a combination of, should I say, honey suckle and, um, buckthorn and.
Well, that's shrub layer.
Yeah, and, but, but I said the shrubs are, you know, the shrubs have already, uh, so the trees were already taken out. For, for good shock. For instance, this section here, coming down. If you remember from the sidewalk we had in January, you walked out.
Yeah, I don't remember what's out there for vegetation at this point, I have to take another look, but.
Yep, so, so that's, um, so that's, that's, uh, um, so mo, my recollection for being out there is most of it, um, especially specifically on the north side of the road is, is, is already, is already trimped. And, uh, oh, and then, yes, interior to the site, um, s, um, the original notice of intent table discussed, you know, the square footage of panels or in jurisdiction. Um, there's a section of panels that was, if you notice, this is, this is a, a vernicle, um, up here. It has the one hundred foot and then the one twenty five, one fifty, two hundred. There are panels within the vernicle buffer on the original design, um, they've been removed in, uh, in any time. So those are, those are the, those are the, those are the reductions that, that, uh, have been, have been incorporated or, or evolved as the, as the, as the project has, has been, been through some other reviews. Okay, yeah, thanks.
Ellie? Any questions?
No.
Lisa?
Um, no, I just wanted to bring up the fact that when this was originally approved, um, approved, the, the review letter from Nova Armstrong had specifically said this was, it was conceptual in, in its design at that point. However, for whatever reason, the commission approved it at the next meeting. So I just want to bring up the fact that they've made substantial, really good changes to this project. Um, but I put some additional information in there so you guys are aware of some DEP policies, just so we're following the right procedures. And you guys can make the call, but, um, I just wanted to throw that all out there.
Okay, was there anyone here on this particular project?
It's in the back.
Carry on, gentlemen. Nothing, Charlie?
Uh, I don't have any questions.
No questions?
No.
Uh, a motion?
I have a motion.
So the, the question is.
Looks to me like they have.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
The question is, can they come before us as they just did? Or if they want an amended order of conditions, we need to follow that DEP protocol? That's number three. It's number three on the DEP. Amended conditions. Policy.
What is typically the standard? Does it amend it?
It's written on the project, so, you know, obviously they reduced, um, and though each one of those steps outlines, you know, I don't think in, at this case, we'd want them to necessarily file an entirely new notice of intent application. I don't think that would be fair. Um, however, item three said even if the commission doesn't require a notice of intent, there's certain procedures about notifying of butters and legal notices. But you guys can take a look.
Okay, so what this is saying is that, um, um, if we wish to accept the changes, they should still publish it in the newspaper saying that we're going to look, uh, we're going to amend the original order of conditions.
Yeah, that's the.
Uh, that seems to be the way to go then.
They wouldn't have to file a new notice of intent?
No.
Just the amendment. And the change is actually beneficial.
Yeah.
They've reduced a lot of impact.
Right.
But it seems as though, uh, in order to approve the changes, we have to, uh, they have to notify the Herald, the Gazette rather.
Of [BLEEP].
Amendment at a meeting.
That sounds.
If I may, I, you know, is it okay?
Couldn't we incorporate that into, uh, the meeting we're going to have in two weeks? Or no, there's not enough time to file?
Not enough time.
Well, right now, they've already requested it here, an amendment, but we will just, if we, if we publish it this next week, that there's our five days notice.
Yeah.
Well.
Won't be enough time.
So we, we need, what is it, a written request for a, a.
Well, they did give us a written request.
For amended order of conditions.
We have.
Okay, so then we would put it in the newspaper, um, that, um, Clearway Energy wishes an amended order of conditions for the site on William Street and, uh, hearing will be held, boom, boom, that's it.
That way there does any abutters?
They don't have to notify the abutters?
They do have to know, it says it right there in the.
Oh, okay, oh, I missed that then.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Procedural.
All right, you, uh, you're hearing that?
Yes, yeah, we're hearing it. We, we did have an alternative suggestion for the board to consider. The, uh, one of the things the guidelines does allow is some discretion on the part of the board around these things. So the guidelines aren't terribly prescriptive or specific to every possible scenario, fairly broad, right? Um, one approach since most of these changes are simply not building something that was approved, right? It's not a wholesale redesign of the project and we're not making, you know, uh, significant changes to the design. We're simply not building some aspects of the project, not building certain panels and we're not building an overhead line. The exception is straightening out a fence, perhaps, right? These might be as-built compliance changes. Considering there's an approved order for these activities and if we don't build them, they come out, they can do it in the aspects.
Could you please sign it?
Pretty obvious that you have to advertise it and in order to give the.
And that's a rule of the, the public notice, public notice of abutters?
Approved the order.
Right.
They're, they're saying, so it would be a deviation from the plan at the end. However, now we're made aware, so what do, we don't want to, we don't want you to be in violation, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's why, yes, and then you still didn't notify the abutts. I mean, in the end.
So, and any possible appeal would only be able to appeal to the changes.
Right.
I, also, it's almost like, you know, you give, you, you give someone permission to clear in the overhead, you know, clear o- for overhead wires and then you take it back, but then what happens if they go and do it? Right? That's how I'm trying to think.
Yeah, yeah, I hadn't thought of that. No, uh.
Because this could change hands again, right? It went from forefront to clearway, what if it changed hands again?
Yeah, no, that's good, those are all good points, yeah, go ahead.
I don't know.
Right.
I wasn't, I didn't know about this procedure, so I'm glad to go and look. It just clears it up.
Yeah.
And some towns don't even go that route. But I know we're trying to straighten out our path and dieting, so.
But the good news is that you have a reduction on the property, which is great. And you made those adjustments, that's, that's excellent.
Uh, Lisa, you mentioned, uh, this was a five-day notice.
Yeah.
Pretty much of prior to the hearing.
Yeah.
Is that five busy stage or is it five days?
It's five, it's, Charlie, is it, it's, so it's a week, right, Charlie? It's a week for abutters and we.
I don't know if there is enough time.
Yeah. Um, typically, I know with forest tales, we might be able to, we could talk Monday, I could look into that, we could talk Monday.
The only reason I was asking was because I didn't know, like, what paper you're publishing and when do they publish? Because it might be able to get it in and still give yourself five days so we can come back in two weeks.
It takes a couple of days for them to publish it. So if he didn't get it in until Monday, townhouse closed tomorrow, he doesn't get it in until.
Actually, if I advertised it tomorrow, uh, there would be time, it would be more than five days before the hearing.
Okay.
And they could make.
Tuesday. It would go in the paper Tuesday.
I forget. They would advertise it probably Tuesday.
But then you, you have to get a certified abutters list.
We have, yeah, we have, we have a certified list.
You have a new, like, a new one, an act, it has to be within three months?
I'll check it, I believe it's that, I believe it's, yeah, we should check that.
And it's within three hundred feet? You can't be looking at a lot of abutters, are you?
Um, I know on one side of the property there's a few, but, okay. I guess it depends on how, what these, these will turn over with the assessor's office is, but if, it sounds like you have a question.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're speaking with the store buyer committee and the planning board and your board, so we're updating those pretty quickly. I guess the last one was.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, Lisa over at the assessor's office can help you, Lisa or Val?
Okay, so what, what, are we going to go for two weeks or a month?
Well, we're not continuing anything, we're just hearing that.
Advertise it.
Okay.
This isn't a hearing, this is just a discussion.
Public advertising for the meeting.
And they got their, their, uh, note, uh.
They have to notify the abutters, yes. And they should be able to do that too.
Okay. So what we need then is a motion to.
It's a certified mailing, you know, that.
So what we need is a, a motion to have a.
Continue the hearing.
Motion to request a public hearing.
Amendment.
Okay, a motion, okay, I move that we have a public hearing for, uh, Clearwater Energy to.
Clearway.
Alter their final, uh, orders of conditions.
Is it that same date?
Well, we have to actually hear the hearing, but before any abutters again, so, you know, we have to actually let them present what they presented, concise version, but, yeah.
Yeah, then you make the termine, then.
Yeah.
And is it that same date, the twenty-ninth?
Yeah, I think it's.
And getting bigger, the meeting's getting bigger.
We'll keep it centered.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you not going to be there now, Kevin?
No, yeah, I have to leave.
Okay.
That's the motion?
Uh, I think I made it.
For the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Twenty-ninth?
I'll send it now.
Well, it's not like we're continuing anything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're just, you know, asking them to submit, would you please submit, you know?
Okay, so, so actually we don't even need a motion, they're just, they've already submitted.
Right.
And we're just going to have the hearing on the twenty-ninth.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you, and then do we get confirmation that we're really on track? Is there a, um, an action tomorrow that needs to happen so that we're sure, right? Is it, is it notification to the newspaper?
Oh, yeah, so, you know, the wording to the newspaper needs to include, you got it in front of you?
It's right here.
No, but you need, uh, what they want to do to, uh.
Amend.
Amend their.
The order of conditions issued in whatever date we issued it.
Yeah.
Form the public that a request for an amendment to the order.
Okay.
Yes.
So, um, described, um.
And you will be.
What the requested amendment is and the proposed activity, um, yeah.
You will take care of the, the billing of that, so you'll be calling them and, uh, I guess paying by credit card or however you do it, and bringing that to us on, on the twenty-ninth, along with the abutters cards.
Oh, we'll, we'll send you the, the newspaper, Bill.
And, um, the, so, we, we should check the abutter, I think what, what Dave was asking is we, if we check the abutters list and for some reason it's older than I think it is, we want to be able to get that information to whoever's going to put the legal ad in so that.
Yeah, can you email Charlie and I tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's the easiest.
Riffle, um, I'll send you his email as well tonight, right now.
Perfect, and, and that, that would be, that would be helpful. And then, um, for the note, for the actual notification, I would, that would just, I would obviously send that as soon as possible. Is there a special one still because of Zoom and we need the link or is it a standard?
No, Zoom, we're not doing Zoom.
Okay, so s- just.
In-person meeting.
So Standard Abutters Protection Act?
And that in conscription commission ballot, yeah?
Okay.
Um, I reply to the entire team here, okay.
You're going to skip that?
Uh, hold on.
I don't know. It's up to you.
To begin?
I don't know. No, no.
Share with the rest of the commission here, we can't, you go.
Is that, is that so?
How did I know?
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thanks a bunch.
Yeah.
But nobody's here for the particular project, that's it. The disposition on this site was what?
No, we didn't have to make a motion, Charlie's going to advertise and we're going to have the hearing on the twenty-ninth.
That's it, continue.
Well, no, nothing to continue, it's going to open it for the twenty-ninth, so we'll, uh, probably get everything completed on the twenty-ninth.
All right, so the next thing on the agenda is a request of certificate of compliance on the property of two zero five five wheels.
Gee, you can read it too.
Yeah.
Now we'll be able to hear you maybe?
Yeah, um, my land's, I declared the title on my land over thirty years ago, like, I was supposed to build, but my grandpa passed away. So nothing got done, shows you keep the land big, and I'm trying to sell it, but I live in Plymouth, I can't take care of the land. And I pulled the deed and I guess it's, it's, I'm just clearing it, looking for the settlement.
Okay, and, and why do you need a certificate of wetlands?
There is wetlands, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's a stream and they're in a no-.
Well, this is the property on sale?
Yeah, I have, so if you, if they were to come before us to build what they were trying to build back in the nineties now, it would, it would never fly. There was fill brought in and there's a foundation that's buried and dilapidated and, um.
Wait, there's an old foundation on this property?
Yeah, that's actually.
That doesn't, that doesn't exist, it's an old foundation that doesn't exist.
Deteriorated, um, and then there's a bridge that's collapsing.
A bridge?
Yeah, so in any case, they need the, their, um, surveyor or an engineer?
Uh, surveyor and engineer, I like those engineers.
Okay, so, yeah, they request, I met him on site and, um, they requested a partial certificate of compliance.
Wait, a comp- a certificate to comply with what?
That's the only means, that's the only means we have to close it out, to get it off as deeds, deed, is to give them a certificate of compliance. So what, so I already typed it.
What have them, what was the compli- what was the, what was the N O I, um, uh, the order of conditions for, to build a house?
You want to look at it, I got it right here.
I mean, it was to build a house, is, I mean, nothing's going to happen to that property.
Right, so it's right here, yeah, and, um, that was D E P file number seventeen dash fifty-eight, that's how old it is. May twenty-third, nineteen ninety, do you guys remember that one?
No.
Which one?
May twenty-third, nineteen ninety.
I'm in high school.
Those were the years.
Okay, so what did we, what did we approve? What did we approve that, that cannot be done now?
Yeah, you approved, wow, do I have the plan?
You know who it was for, sir, it was for, uh, the house?
There was a.
Yes, actually mine had.
Gravel driveway with a crossing over the stream and a bridge and, I mean, and a, um, and a foundation.
Yeah, and that's that little mound in the back, um, okay.
Yes, it was such a.
Yeah, so my, my, I already typed it up, so it's all ready to go if you guys just want to sign it tonight and then I'll make copies and he can pick it up next week.
But we are saying what is completed though?
I'm telling, I'm telling you right now, yeah.
Yeah, the gentleman said it was for, originally it was for the, the property being, uh, dwelling being built fifty feet away from a brook.
Yes, a long time ago.
And they got their occupancy years ago, obviously, they've been living there for.
Well, it's not there, that was a long time, that was.
Oh, no, no, it's just a.
It's just a, yeah, it's always.
Oh, no one's living there.
No, so nothing's ever built.
No, just a bad building, it was.
Maybe some turtles.
There, there is a stream that makes a loop around and on one, on the bend, the return bend, there is a bridge that's, I guess it's got a couple steel beams under it, but the whole thing is rotted, um, there's, uh, it's, it's six to eight feet lower than the road.
Is this an original Wilson property?
And so, on a good ground, the whole thing is going to be full of gutted.
The one that's already built house?
No.
So I don't know what we can give you a certificate of compliance for, except to say that you have.
Then I'm trying to build a house.
Your.
He's not trying to build a house.
Going to try to build a house?
No, he's not trying to build a house, he just wants to sell the property.
Yeah.
So the partial certificate, how I wrote it, and you guys can vote if you want, is hereby certified that only the following portions of work regulated by the above referenced order of conditions have been satisfactory completed. The project areas or work subject to this partial certificate certification that have been completed and are released from this order are, I'm going to say, some work on the site did occur, however, the foundation and overpass are now deteriorated and buried. Work on this site will require a new notice of intent, that's how I left it.
Um, hmm. Nothing's going to get built on that site, you realize that?
Yeah, I just.
He's selling as is.
Yeah, as is.
Someone called about maybe building a garage there and I said, look, you need to hire an engineer to figure out if that's feasible. I've gotten way too many calls, we must have just gone down with the price.
Yes, I want that.
Fifty thousand, or is it down to five million?
Check me, take, take me down a little bit of the street.
Oh, I know, I'm a lot. Okay, now, you know where Gus Hoffman's field is?
Yeah.
So it's Gus's field, right across the street, Bob Wilson.
On the curb.
House there.
Yeah, go right past the cubicle house, it'll be on your left, there's a white ranch, it's right around that corner.
And you're driving that guy crazy by giving his address in the newspaper, because everyone is stopping at his house and, and, uh, and running on his property looking for the flags that are overgrown and, and, uh, I, and hidden. And, because I was one of them, I went there with my grandson and, uh, the, the place was, uh.
Well, the original order was issued to twenty fifty-five, we're yellow.
You know, I would almost want to put on there, the site is not, uh, House Lot Village. You know, I would almost wanna put on there, the site is not house lot buildable, I would almost wanna put that on there.
That's fine, we can do whatever you want.
I mean, uh.
I don't, I don't know why.
Do you know where the, the stream goes one way, it goes both ways?
No, I know where the lot is, not, he told me where it was, I know the land.
That driveway that goes to Wilson, is, is that on the property that, or is that on Wilson?
No, that's a separate process, it's all.
Okay, all right, because I was told that it was on the property, no, it was someone my, my grandson was talking to on the phone, a real estate agent, I think it was, said that, that there's a driveway on the property in the back, that that's.
And then the other thing to keep in mind is the north side, almost like the north property line, there's an intermittent stream, and when you go a little past the fill area where the foundation was, there's a, a BBW, so it, it's more than just a stream.
How big is this, what piece of land?
It's one point seven zero, I guess.
So he wouldn't meet any setbacks anyway, they'd be trying to build anything.
I know, well, that's not what he's trying to, he's not trying to build anything, he's just trying to sell as is, and anyone.
Wouldn't meet any setbacks. I'm just thinking outside the box, he wouldn't meet any of the setbacks.
The entire property is within the two hundred foot riverfront, uh.
Yeah.
In an ORW.
But that, you know, I'll tell you, you gotta say it, you gotta tell the people that.
You know, this is. Well, if you guys sign it, I'll type it the way you want.
Okay, I, I think that, um, what was that added comment, that I said that the, not.
Not buildable.
Uh, not house lot build, well, there's, you can't put a septic in there.
Well, let the board help determine that.
I know, you don't.
Well, no.
It happened in the first fifty feet of the river.
Yeah, you can't even get a hundred feet or two, you can't get a hundred feet.
All the way around. It's just not buildable, but I mean, it's saleable, maybe somebody wants to.
No. Oh, yeah, it's saleable, um.
Goodbye, could hang a nice hymn, it'd be nice peace of mind.
Gee. Offer it to someone in the neighborhood for a tax deduction.
Yeah.
Well, I try conservation, to see if somebody from conservation, unfortunately, I want the olive lawn, I, I want.
Conservation here?
No, not here, I mean, cause like the society for animals would buy it, but they tell me it's not big enough, it's not small, it's not dry enough, it's not wet enough, it's like, if I get to sell it for the animals.
Oh. Yeah, you need it.
You get a horse, it's not, plenty of wet.
I'd rather do that.
What about con- conservation commission?
Hmm, yeah, I mean, it would work. It's just after me to do it, but I'm already doing it, it's just back and forth, it's just, it's too much.
Just tell me how you guys want me to write it up. You don't like the way I wrote it, any new.
Oh, no, I, I, uh, just maybe an addition to it.
Just edit that.
There you go.
Um, okay, um.
So, uh, once it's completed, I'll mail you the book out, or do you wanna pick it up either way?
I have to pick it up, that's all, that might be the best thing to do for the land, just so I can try to kinda get out of my, see, I mean, like, can I, conservation would be interested, something like that?
Okay. Conservation?
I mean, it'd be nice to have, at least go, you know.
They'd have to decide on that.
I mean, I've said it off a lot and I've, and I'm not, I didn't say it to, to put anything on you or anyone to, to donate land, so, I mean, I don't wanna consider that one, but, uh, there's no way anyone's gonna get a house in there. Because the whole thing, you got the riverfront, but it makes that huge loop, and, and I'm sure it, the whole thing floods. Uh, I understand that the slide pole on the, on the north side, no, east side, that the water on a good rain goes all the way, floods the whole area, all the, okay.
Yeah, it's true, yeah, it's just, um.
So it's this way?
Fix it.
Yeah, quick, quick.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks much.
Sure.
On the updates and discussion section. Phil from that worship service line as a voting member of the conservation commission. I did not realize I had to do that in writing and I haven't done it yet, so we'll have to continue.
What's that?
I said, I didn't realize I had to do that in writing.
You do.
So I, and I haven't done it.
I know.
So we will continue.
Yes.
Okay, but we also need to.
Okay, so, there's no resignation.
We also need to reorganize.
Lisa?
Yeah?
Don't cover your mouth, I'm using your lips.
We also need to reorganize, so, do you wanna remain chair, if you're gonna remain as a member?
Well, I have to, cause I haven't, I can't, I didn't have resigned yet.
Okay, um, is there a Dan here?
There's what?
Dan, we have a gentleman that's interested in getting on the commission.
I don't see him.
We, we did get some interest from a gentleman needing Dan and.
Did you have his last name? No, okay.
Yeah, somewhere here.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is the commission members, reapportments have been made by the selectmen, stop by the town, get sworn in.
Tom, hey, Charlie, you do it, you sign in, you, you take your oath at the town hall, okay, and then on the hook, there's anybody else?
I did.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so anyways, the gentleman seemed really competent and interested and, um, I gave the selectman's office his information at the beginning of the week. Um, I thought maybe they'd reach out to him, but I think Leon, Leon was away, so, he, no one reached out to him, however, um, I emailed him, no, I called him today. And I asked him if he maybe wanted to come to a meeting and see what it was like before he, you know, got appointed, um.
Well, he would be an alternate.
Right, he'd be an alternate, um, I've got an email from him, so I'm gonna look that up and tell you what his name is. Got it. Dan Lapage, Daniel Lapage of six seventy Main Street.
What's the number?
Daniel Lapage, six seventy Main Street, um, he works for property management company as a land acquisition agent, um. I'll read you what he sent in, I have been a certified conservation planting replacement specialist for over seventeen years. I've had to work with property owners in replacing destroyed plant habitat on Cape Cod. Um, I'm certified, um, training from Deerfield Mass, twenty plus years of horticultural specialist, reestablishment of native habitat, those are his, um, that's his training. Um, please list other volunteer opportunities, you may have experienced United Way volunteer, Alzheimer's Association volunteer. Um, I'm applying to become a member of the conservation commission because I want to help the town of Dayton.
Sounds like he has a lot of experience, uh, I don't know how many alternates you can actually have, is it just one, or you can have it generally three one? So, if that's being said, uh, if, if you did resign, it's up to you, um, and this gentleman did apply or wanted to be, it sounds like he has a lot of experience, I would, I would have to talk to him, meeting with him, I would stay as an alternate if he, and if he wanted to be as a member, uh, or vice versa, um.
How would recommend you?
Well, that, that's up to the, yeah, you guys are the voting members, but, uh, we still would like to beat on the land and discuss it is, uh.
Yeah. I'll invite him to the next meeting formally in an email.
Yeah.
Twenty ninth.
Oh, it's get, the meeting's getting.
Oh, yeah, it's in, on, uh.
Lisa, well, can you give me his name and address again, Lisa, please?
I think so, hold on, I gotta look at it.
Uh, Jim's got it.
I got it for him.
Okay.
Dan.
Lapage.
Six seventy. There you go.
Okay. It sounds it.
Yeah, I got nervous.
Hey, I sent the email.
Oh, that's good, the air conditioning, yeah, yeah, okay, bro.
All set?
Yeah.
Discuss a few pounds, pounds of lingoys for payment.
That's off the agenda now because that was paid, um, what's the attorney's name, Matt Gangue?
Yeah.
Gangue, yes.
Matt Pasta, um, I got an email literally like the first week of July for this work he did based on our potential, um, case with strawberry fields back in, that Charlie was dealing with, back in December and January, I got the invoice, the first week of July, got really confused, why are we getting an invoice now? Um, for whatever reason, they, they didn't send it out right away, so, here we are, and of course, we've passed the fiscal year change, um, the selectmen decided to pay for it out of their own legal fee funds. Which I thought was pretty generous.
Unfortunately, we still have the nine hundred and ten dollars to deal.
From Beta, okay.
I don't know, uh, Beta gave advice to Gangue in the same process, and they've submitted a bill for nine hundred and ten bucks that we go on. We approved payment last meeting, but we don't know how we're gonna pay it. We may be able to pay it with conservation funds from the applicant's payments when they filed.
Yeah.
That's the only one.
We may be able to pay it out of that, but we may not.
Um, that's what it's for, yeah, um.
Well, there's a conservation, there's limits to what.
But they're, they're the biologists and this is what they're, they're, they're being paid to do.
Well, we'll see, but I'll submit it to pay for payment and we'll see what happens.
Okay, is that, we need a motion on the, to pay, uh.
No, we already, we already motioned last meeting.
Okay, all right.
Do you need me to look into that for you, to see if there's any?
Pardon?
Are you gonna look into that or do you want me to look into that?
Uh, well, I have a bill, I have it at home.
Okay.
I'll can, uh, bring it in tomorrow, no, you don't work tomorrow, wait and get it Monday.
Monday. Um, go ahead, Bill.
See the street letter, is your update?
I have an update, um, Matthew has been cooperative, he hired Steven Schmuel to do the delineation, this is, um, the one where, you know, he installed the paddock. And he's got some old areas of filled that he inherited from when he bought the property, uh, from the previous owner, fifteen sixty-six seater. So he's been, uh, really cooperative, I met, um, before the last meeting, I met he and Steven Schmuel out there, Steven Zabarnes. Uh, we talked about where the wetland line needed to be flagged and what areas needed to be restored, and, um.
Yep.
We've been going back and forth a little bit, but I have a sketch from him and, um, Zenith Engineering is going to complete the survey, apparently, um, the end of next week, um, so they'll have, if I want an onsite meeting, I can do that with them, and that's where we're at for that one. So they're being cooperative, things are moving in the right direction.
Pleasure.
Okay.
William Street, Reed Brothers.
Okay, I told them they didn't have to come tonight because I asked for, um, an update from Jason at Outback Engineering, um, basically, water line on that one.
Is that being, taking care of the driveway and the debris that was dumped?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, well, um, so, from Greg Drake over at Outback, just following up with an update, I'm in the process of putting together the wetland mitigation plan for the project. It should be completed and ready for review within the next week, would we send the plan directly to you or do you want us to come to the meeting? Let us know when you get a chance, um, also Greg Logan from Blue Stone will be attending the meeting tonight, and I said, thank you for the update, there's no reason for anyone to come, um, I can update the commission. So, hopefully by the next meeting.
The twenty ninth?
Yep. Why don't we spread it out a little bit, our meeting is so long.
All right, the next one is five seventy-eight Hawk Street, I'm gonna excuse myself and let somebody else take over, but I'll have some questions also. Jim, can you do it?
I'm sorry, Bill.
Can you like the chairman for this one, too? Thank you.
It's, it's five seventy-eight Hawk, five seventy-eight.
That's a five seventy-eight Hawk Street.
Five seventy-eight Hawk Street, enforcement order, order of conditions expired, request for determination of the two applicant, applicant.
Yeah, applicant, okay.
Applicant, definitely, and update.
I'm ready to stand.
Thank you, you're good, you're awesome.
Uh, well, from just the last meeting, it had been continuing, given it, recent information that has been passed, um, handed over to the RDA, um, as far as the as-built that you have asked for, um, that pro line, working on that, it's kinda, I know that they're busy, so, um, it's just kinda waiting to, with that. Um, as far as the conditions there, I know that, uh, Jim, you were, had gone by there this past week, a lot.
I was up there walking around the property, uh, through the back and on the front, uh, you're not gonna grow grass on what's there, you don't, you don't have one stitch of loam whether you didn't put it or whether, uh, it's down the street, I don't know.
Well, down the street definitely isn't, um, but, uh, I know that, um, I don't have loom there, um, I didn't put loom in a section in the back, I just so seed up, and I got grass and weeds there, but I got some, um, so, um, at this point, I don't have, uh, loom, but.
What's that used pile in the back?
That's loom.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but it's got rocks and stuff on it, so I haven't, that's why I haven't used it yet, um, but I do have some pictures that'll, uh, pass to the board, um, of what the property is beginning to look like, uh, front pictures, I had more, but I couldn't get them inside because.
Okay, uh, what I've been tossing in my mind is, uh, you putting some of that loam down, and I know you said there's rocks in it, but that would have to be picked, and then putting sod on it. And that way you get, uh, instant, uh, protection.
Well, um, I had also thought of sod, but, uh, it's not feasible for the cost, um, that's, I just won't be able to do it, I, 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 I mean, it's.
What would the cost be to do your front, or on the septic, yeah?
To do my front, I don't know, but I know that sod is extremely expensive and I have the funds to put sod down, I got more important things, not that this is important, but other stuff that, you know, I need to address, um, and I, I could, I definitely. I mean, I, I don't know, I don't say if I'm gonna put, you know, being told to put sod down, um, feel a little bit di- difficult, or extremely difficult.
I don't know, if you're looking at these, uh, I'll look at, did he look at first, I'll, uh.
The amount of, uh, section of bad ground that I have now is, uh, I'm sure it's, the board might not look at it this way, but I feel that it's minimal. The amount of protection that I put around it throughout this whole project, um, I mean, should and has done, it's, uh, it serves, does purpose.
It is, it is, it's just, it's more of the crown. I think that's where you don't have it, is the crown of your.
Yeah, this section, um, sorry, that's all, that's grass above the top, that's the top of the, that's, actually, that's the area that I didn't put any sod, uh, loam down, and that's where the two seed in that group, that section that you said in the crown, that was just, that's just the two sod, two sides, three sides of it.
Against the House, have just a little area of dirt patches?
Wanna look at this?
I think so, right?
I'm actually, yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if that works with a lot of, I'm, I'm dealing with the board.
It's actually, um.
I want, uh, actual, oh, okay, that is fifty percent clay, that's sort of, I was up to, I was, I mean, one, it's, it's work.
Uh, I also, Jim, um, I also, uh, installed some, um, mesh, down some extra mesh that I had, put that down in the bas blocks, um, I didn't bring those pitches, I didn't, uh, mention it to Lisa, I think I tried to, I'm gonna call her today.
Yep.
As far as putting the, the, that loam that I have now, um, one of the big reasons why I'm hesitant to do that is just because of everything had been put through with, uh, the abutting nails, so I tried to do nothing and just get, get it over done with.
Well, with all the rain we have, like, I have like a little area where I just, my saw, when I was digging on my ground, I put some dirt on the side, and you should see, you know, grass all over. That was, it's just what you think is little, uh, it's not, nothing's gonna grow, it'll grow now.
Because of all the rain, water table's at, like, two feet, I guess.
Yeah, it's really, my God, this is.
So Lisa, you said you're working with, uh, therapy?
Yep.
Right, like, his own, my head.
Therapy?
Now, you would think that this here would.
Not about this, but he brought in the RDA, it looks good, um, we're just waiting for the ASBills, and Board of Health is waiting for the ASBills.
It's getting through somewhere.
I want the, the ASBills, not just because of conservation, I mean, my priorities are Board of Health.
This looks good out here. Ten times better than the front than it did in January.
It would be closer if I get shut down for the, uh, when we had COVID.
It's not going over there, down.
No, I walked in here. There's a silt fence below this.
As far as silt fences from the very first one.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
Mentioned silt fences, I actually have, I counted seven layers of either silt fence, stone to revert the warp, uh, ditch, um, or I should say a catch basin, uh, more silt fences, some sod, uh, straw sod, and the last one with the silt fence. I mean, I counted seven, or actually, leaves my car.
Some barriers.
It's like three that used to be.
Lisa, were you out there after last driving?
Oh, yeah.
There is a stitch of.
Dermans, they've been, I don't know what was running down the street and into the neighboring property, but there was definitely mud running across the street. Um, so, um, the situation is, in addition to Mr. Duot's property, now we also have Mr. Kamara's property next door. He pulled the permit for a garage last year, and now he's building that, and I don't know if the hole's open on that, and then he pulled the permit for an in-ground pool. Um, he has put in erosion controls, and I've spoken with him directly, so, you know, between the two neighbors working together on this, I'm hoping that we can get some mitigation for what I, what I, you know, as far as some resolution. And I also recommended to the neighbor that they possibly put a barrier at the top of the street, above the field, above the stream, but, um, just to mitigate it temporarily until we figure out exactly where it's coming from. I mean, I guess I just need to be there in the next downfall.
That's why it's good when somebody pulls a building permit, that everyone's involved. Like, when I worked in Deco, there was a sign-off, and we'd say, we'd, we'd say, well, if you have any, uh, what would happen is, somebody would apply for a building permit, and then something would float around saying, if you have any issues with this pro- property, and if it was Board of Health, they'd say, oh, move this, uh, it's too close to the septic tank, whatever it is, and for conservation, they could say, it would be nice to see some kind of barrier to here, and it just alleviates any issues.
Definitely.
We don't have that in place, but.
Okay, well, it's my turn.
Well, you should do it from over there.
Well, we, we, we have to, the commission's speaking.
I can't hear you.
I said you should do it from there.
Why?
City is a commissioner here.
No, I'm not. There's the chairman right there, and I'm just sitting here instead of going over there. I can't, you want me to move ten feet away?
But you should have done that right at the beginning when you, when you recuse yourself.
My, my, my initiative.
If you're comfortable there, go ahead.
I don't know if I'm done or not, so, I don't want you standing here.
This has been going on, this has been going on for over five years.
No, no, I, I wasn't sure if, 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 if the commission had something to add.
Do you have something to add? Yes, I do. Thank you. It's been going on for five years. The April storm was pretty bad, the last Friday storm was pretty bad, it's still running off onto my property, and running into my property. You make comments like, uh, your pond will be okay, it just won't be as deep. Uh, that's what you said.
What did I say?
You said that your pond's gonna be all right, it just won't be as shallow, it'll be a little shallower.
I didn't say anything like that. You must have selective hearing.
Oh, anyway, uh, this needs to stop, uh, and, and I wanna know right now from every one of the commissioners on this board, if this man is gonna be responsible for the material that he put in my wetlands.
That's something that you.
No, 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 just, it's a yes or no question, Charlie.
We don't have the authority to make him do anything over there.
How, well, how, why is that?
We don't.
He filled in a wetland, and you can't, and, and, and you can't, you don't have any jurisdiction over wetlands?
He's not filling it anything directly.
Yes, he is, and he has been for five years.
Can we take into consideration the ash that you put in the ditch? Does that also come with, sorry, I'm gonna talk.
I'm not a lawyer, but I can't.
You don't have to be a lawyer, Charlie, all you have to do is protect the wetlands.
That allows us, us to do what you ask. I really don't.
You don't know what?
I.
I, I couldn't hear you.
You want me to write it for you?
No, I just want you to tell me so I can hear it.
Well, I'm, I'm just pretty close to you, I, I can hear you. I should, I don't believe there's anything in the wetland back that would allow us to do what you'd want to do with him, to go in there and, and remove soil that ran off his property. He didn't put it in there.
Yes, he did.
The good Lord helped.
No, no, he, 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 he put it in there because he didn't have the proper, he, he didn't keep it on his property like the law requires him to do.
Well, he's tried to do that over and over and over again.
And he failed, and he failed, and he failed. Did you see the pitches I sent you last week? Okay, Charlie, all you have to do is say yes or no.
I'm not gonna say anything. We've already had this discussion many times. You know how I feel, and I'm not gonna repeat it. Simple as that.
Jim, I would like a yes or no answer from you.
We do not have authority to make him go onto your property and clean up anything, and I was talking with the, with the Stormwater Group today, and they've told you that this is, if you have a problem now, because it says Charlie gets cited, that it's civil action on your part.
So I have to get, I have to get a lawyer to sue him to make him take the stuff out of my pond.
That's what I'm told.
That's something the court would decide.
Who told you that, Jim?
That's, that's what I was told, by Stormwater.
By, I'm Stormwater, Jim.
Yeah, then you gotta listen to the people that speak to you, because I was told that you were said that, they were told you that this is civil.
They did not.
Okay, then, then I'm wrong.
Absolutely not.
Okay, then I'm wrong.
Bill, I gotta agree with Charlie and Jim on this one. I gotta agree with John and Jim on this one. This is, I think this is on our hands, and as far as that's concerned, I'm thinking it becomes a legal issue.
Lisa?
Between you two.
No, Lisa's not in this, she is our agent, she's to assist us, she is our agent. Now that we're talking, I don't, she works twenty-five hours a week for us.
What the hell is that, that they're doing, my question?
And, and calling here all hours of the, of, on every weekend.
I don't do it. Do you?
You call me all the time, and, and on weekends and everything else, and, and you're sending me pictures all the time. She does not work twenty-four seven.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just, uh, one, one other note. I've been on the board for a short time, and, and it is my understanding that, from being on these meetings, that the, this road itself is almost like a river coming down from the rainstorm.
It is.
So it's hard to even determine who specifically. I understand he has a, he's working on the, on that site, and unfortunately, it should have been done years ago, whatever it is. But it all, it's also my understanding that, since I've been here, numerous steps are taken, you know, this gentleman has taken to address this.
Taken a lot of stuff.
I've seen it where there was only a one siltation fence, and now it's barrier after barrier after barrier, looks like it's established. He's making the steps, they're making the steps to complete this. If you wanna take it in a different direction, you have all the right, you can, you can go that route, but in my eyes, from, I'm being on this chair, I mean, the seat, I see that this individual is working towards that goal.
He is.
And now it's just the ASBills. Again, if you wanna proceed with whatever you have to proceed with, but it, I have to agree with this board.
Okay, I have to, it's up to me to take action against him, because the Conservation Commission, I, I can't, it's thrown up the hand, there's nothing they can do about it. That's what I'm understanding.
He's done everything we've asked. He's done everything he, we've asked.
You shouldn't have to ask.
And, well, and even stuff that we didn't ask for, he's done.
Really?
He's built little dams, he's built.
This is the first time I've seen, this is the first time I've seen his DEP number. I've never seen it on his property. He's never had a sign-off.
Yes, I have.
Why, why is that?
You know that his, uh, his, his filing, his notice of intent filing is done. There's no notice of intent in, in force now. He doesn't need a sign.
Mr. Doyle, it's on there. May I?
Now, now he doesn't, but he did it for the first three years.
Well, I, I'm not sure that that's true, but, uh.
Well, it's true.
Well.
Mr. Duot's gonna have the floor now.
Have you ever had a sign there with a DEP file number?
Absolutely. It's one of the fir- very first things I had to do before I did anything, and it's still probably sitting there right now, right behind my mailbox, up high, I be supplied with. That's, I know for a fact that I could have did it myself. Now, you're right, we shouldn't have completed years ago the house. I wish I had the finances to do it, uh.
I'm just saying it would have.
No, 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 I, 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 trust me, my wife's here, and she would have loved to have it done years ago, too. Um, I've been doing it with whatever I have and able to, with my father's help, so that has a lot of meaning and value to me.
I understand.
Um, now, the board, because of the abutter, who also sits on the board, has made me jump, I feel, made me jump through hoops, and it was text messages, it was emails, it was phone calls, it was visits that Charlie made constantly, and it was plenty of times, I will say, that I, even now, fed up with everything. It was just one thing after another. Everything you asked me to do, I would complain about it, but I, I felt that I would do it. I had to get an engineer out there twice. Uh, I got, um, that all done, I, uh, stone, I had the whole medi- uh, uh, Conservation Board out there, just about the gym, I believe you were there, Kevin, you weren't here at that time at the very beginning. I had to put swales in my driveway, I had to do all kinds, I did all that. It's been one thing after another he keeps on complaining. If I start my machines, somebody's getting a phone call, somebody's getting a, uh, uh, I'm getting a visit, every single thing. He's giving pi- pitches to this board of location where the water is dirty, according to picture. Absolutely, it looks dirty. And Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, the same pitches from the same location, I grabbed a cup, a brand new cup, white cup, I grabbed it and I showed him the water. That water was not what was it, would look like in that picture. It looked dirty, but it was not dirty, it was clear. You even said, would I drink it? I said, no, my father said he would. You remember that?
It did look dirty.
Uh, it's just been, it's ongoing, it's non-stop, it's, it's, no, it wasn't troubling, it was clear. Um, you know, and, and Bill keeps on saying how it was me, me, me. I need dirt. Why would I wanna give him dirt into his pond? I'm trying to keep it, yeah, on my property. I have to buy loam, I've been buying it to put there, so last thing I wanna do is give him or let any of my dirt that I have to buy into his property, and he keeps on saying it's my dirt. What about the ash that he had put there? And again, I brought this up before, meeting, a couple meetings ago. I have witnesses, and I have pitches of Bill putting ash there in the ditch, the same ditch that has the water goes down to his pond. All he complains about is the water being dirty. You know, what Bill's trying to do is the same thing he tried to do to the Kamaras, and from what I've understood, he's done it to the other bill, to the other, uh, uh, place, uh, house. The RDA, too. The only reason, I don't know if this is true, but I will find out. The only reason I'm here and why the Kamaras, uh, were also brought up is because he hasn't received any money from them. I was under the impression, I've been told, that he did receive money from the other builder through the insurance company. He took the money and never did anything with it, but then when it came time for the Kamaras, he was looking to get more money to clean what he accused the other builder of. So this is an ongoing thing. This is, before I even wa- uh, built my house, Bill already had a reputation of who he was. I was already prepared for him, just to show how he is, so it's a shame that this person here is the chairman and just honestly hate to say, he gives the town, the, the conservation a bad name because of, he's using his position to benefit them. Not on a great basis, but with.
He doesn't want me.
Regardate the problem with the water. That's, if that's gonna be between you two.
Yep. However you decide to do it, that's between you guys.
The last thing I'm gonna say is, everything that the town has asked me to do, I've done. I have all kinds of protection, everything there. I, I mean, it, like I said, he sees my machines start up, I don't even do nothing, he's already calling, complaining that the water's dirty.
Again, that has nothing to do with conservation. That has nothing to do with, with wetlands or anything as far as that's concerned, that's beyond us, and I think that you've been doing everything and that we've asked, and the situation, I don't know how this is gonna resolve, this is gonna have to resolve between you guys, but I think, as, I don't know if you guys agree, that our hands are tied a little bit with this as far as what's going on, because you're doing what's asked. So I don't know where this needs to go, but, and this is, you know, this has been an ongoing problem more than one law. I agree with that.
I'm gonna continue doing whatever the board asked me to do, like I've been doing, so if, if, to resolve any issues that we may have in future.
So all we're missing is the ASBills, and what else, Lisa?
That's good.
Okay.
Um, did you find any record that it was recorded?
I just looked at one time, I haven't looked at.
I didn't, I didn't.
I looked for it at home, but I have to actually.
I don't think it is.
So, I re- I recall going to the town registry deeds and, and when I first first started this project.
Maybe you recorded the RDA.
I'm not sure. I know, it's something. Anybody have anything else?
So, yeah, I do have something.
I'm sure you all saw the pictures of the last storm.
I didn't get any pictures.
Yeah, I sent your pictures of the last storm.
They did. They didn't show up on my computer.
Yeah, it went in my junk mail.
It's my field, Charlie.
Went in my junk mail.
That's coming down my field from Hart Street.
I saw Lisa's. That's your field.
Yeah, Fri- last, last Friday.
It was the same pictures I replied to everybody in the email.
That was an exceptional storm.
The, the juke match.
That's an exceptional storm.
That you added.
So they, everybody's exceptional storm.
Can you get some more until this, the fall?
Yep, yep.
I mean, why not, right?
It's been a crazy summer, it's raining, something, you know, you know.
I'll be heading to drop, so, yeah, I will, uh.
Yeah, we're out of the drought.
Heavy, heavy rains at the time.
I will, uh, I will put more down.
Thanks.
I'll send you the pictures when I, uh.
And you guys are rounding the corner, right? You're almost in there?
Yeah.
Nice.
Another couple years.
Moving on.
You're all set? Thank you. Bill? Take that over again?
Sure. Pleasant street. Pleasant Street.
Have a good night.
Burroughs Notice of Intent filing date.
Hey, my clip or your clip?
Wait a minute. Do you wanna give us coffee, Bill?
You want?
Yeah.
I'll leave it there. I'll have more for you.
For the breakfast. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You too.
Pleasant Street. Burdough's Notice of Intent filing date.
Yeah, I have an update.
Doesn't look like the only one.
Alright. Um, Mr. Burdough called me and asked me what he needed to do to get things moving along. And I said, I started explaining what he needs to do for Notice of Intent. I was, you know, you have to get the, the abutters notified, you know, do everything you need to do here. Um, oh, will Lighthouse know? I said, yes. Okay, I'll have them call you. So I spoke, um, with Richard from Lighthouse Land Surveying, very good, nice guy. Um, his response was, good morning, Lisa, I have conferred with Mr. Burdough regarding two, three, nine, six Pleasant Street, and he agrees that the next step, best step would be to get the project back on track. As a result, I have contacted our wetland scientist, Stephen Schmell, in order to delineate the appropriate boundaries of the B B W and the riverfront and provide us with a report also. He will be available for the next meeting if needed. Mr. Schmell will be letting, getting this on a scheduled A S A P so we can get the boundaries and the data picked up via review. Unfortunately, we don't have anything to provide you in formal means for tonight's meeting. Um, you have completed most of the fieldwork. Sure of the delineation that Stephen will provide. We look forward to completing this project to your satisfaction. So one thing to keep in mind with this project is it's in B L S F, Bordered Lands Subject to Footing. So there's flood compensation that's necessary. I mean, we built, forget how many square feet the addition is. But anyways, when the time comes, you know, when we get the Notice of Intent, which will be hopefully sooner than later, we can require seven hundred and twenty square foot addition. So that's, that's where we're at with that. Progress.
You did a great job.
The other, thank you. The other thing Richard said was, uh, he had told Mr. Burdough originally, um, what he needed to do and before he even built it. And he decided not to do it. So he said there's steps A through D, and now Mr. Burdough skipped step C. Um, so admittedly, it was like, oh, conservation, we're not gonna deal with that. Just keep that in mind when we hear them. That's all I got on that.
County Street Enforcement Order Issues.
Twenty-three seventy-one.
Gee, you've been waiting here a long time. You've been having fun?
Uh, initially. John Mitchell for, uh, Mr. Enos and Ms. Whitmore.
John Mitchell?
Yes.
You guys can sit down.
We just here follow up to a site visit a couple weeks ago and, uh, well, they're, whatever the commission's looking for. Um, the Enos on the property jointly. They, um, shouldn't want to fill the area, and this is one of the areas near the old railroad bed. Everyone else in that area has filled, um, really without any incident. Mr. Enos who oversees the property was out of commission for about a year because of back surgery. And in that period, someone who had kind of properly filled when Mr. Enos was about in overseeing it, came in and, you know, there may be some items in there improperly, but, um, he's willing to hear the commission and see, you know, how we can resolve what's been filled. But he's also looking for permission to complete the fill and bring his line up with all his neighbors who have filled their yards in over the years without any incident.
What kind of fill we talking about?
Have you seen it?
I, I heard. It's, well, it's everything, right?
Everything.
It's not fill, it's just.
Including the kitchen sink.
These are fill, Mr. Pavel was the first one to start to fill it. And then we passed away, um, teacakes down the street. They were throwing in good stuff. And somebody got in there, saw they were dumping in there, figured they could dump in there too, and started dumping brush in there. That's what happened.
Do you know who was dumping the brush?
I, uh, my son caught him. I told him, stay out of there, and he wasn't allowed in there anymore. And since then, he hasn't, he hasn't been back. But he dumps down the street to my next door neighbor who charges people to dump their brush on his property. So.
So it's just brush and fill? Not like, well, no.
Everything.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at. It's not.
Mostly concrete storm. It's mostly what's going to say.
So it's in a B B W that's connected to an intermittent stream. Intermittent stream runs in a southerly direction, comes out in a catch basin underneath Hart Street and goes down to the town, remember?
The stream is down.
It's, it's the stream that, there's always, um, behind the, behind the, um,
One of the, one of the gentlemen on board, one of the other boards, used to walk that road when I was a kid.
I, I have trouble here.
How about Masters House? Do you know, students, I guess?
Yeah, I know what it is.
I think we're getting further down the road.
There's no string down there. The string further down on my brother's property. It comes out on the Hart Street. Way down. The water fills up there from the rainwater. The state put a drain pipe, goes across my brother's property, the storm drain, it's easement, and dumps down into the railroad bend further down. That's where a big amount of water is built up. That's all from water that runs off of one thirty-eight. This time of year it's watering them only because of all the rain we've had. Usually, July and August, it's drying the bone down.
Yeah, it's drying bone all over. It's not drying out.
Not drying out.
I was born in this town seventy-six years ago. I've lived there almost all my life. That was my father's property. I've always walked down there. Everyone has filled, two of these years has been filling that property. Why are we zoned out as the only ones that are being told we can't fill?
And we're on top of the hill.
Everyone else has filled from Lighthouse Lane, Hart.
Yeah, well, you, uh, would you agree what you're putting back there is not appropriate? Yeah, we're only dealing with this right now. It's almost like that saying everybody else has. But right now, what's in front of us is two, three, seven, one County Street. So would you say what you put back there is inappropriate?
Everything.
Well, they would, nothing to people, as I said.
Who owns the property?
Mr. Russell, oh, yeah, he doesn't, pardon?
Who owns the property?
They own the property, so people are coming on. Mrs. Whitmore doesn't live there, doesn't go over there.
It's an old restaurant. You have control of that. I have control of that.
We stopped them.
Would they heard what, uh, what might need to be removed? We met on site and no one really indicated.
Since we know on site, all this rain.
It's gonna have a beginning and a, it has to have an end.
It's actually dangerous to stand there on straw.
You said you knew some of the people that were dumping.
Teacake.
Teacake.
One thirty-eight.
Teacake, yeah.
And stone, stonewall is on, I'm telling.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. He used to want to inform me that somebody else was dumping that in.
He what?
He, someone had called me, told me that somebody else was dumping that in.
Okay, so he was dumping there also?
Somebody else was dumping.
He was dumping with permission. Someone else has seen, uh, dumped it. And again, it's cause Mr. Enos was recuperating and not having.
Is there a plan in place to remove that?
No one's indicated what they want me to move, and that's why we're here tonight.
Have you worked with any other, besides the conservation, have you worked with any other?
Well, we got stonewall here next week.
What about mortar house, do you?
Well, there is stonewall. I mean, that's, they oversee it. I mean, they were there, but, um, it's the stonewall committee that does that for the, uh.
You struck, you struck down so much now, you'd be pretty happy to move. It's safe.
Are you working in there right now?
Man, do you live there now?
No, she lives up in.
Yeah, that's up there.
Bill's lane.
Bill's lane. We rented. It's my father's, my father's restaurant.
It's a hillbilly.
I remember when it was a restaurant.
Hillbilly, right.
That was, that was my father's dump back in the forties and fifties.
Right.
That was his dump. We burnt the rubbish, dumped it all in the.
Everything should be dumped over the hill.
I can dig in that hill and, and bring out rubbish from the nineteen forties, fifties, sixties.
That's the problem, because if that is a resource center, you're saying it's not, but they're saying it is. Then there's an issue because.
There's no, there's no, there's no stream down here.
Even if there isn't a stream, there's a B B W. There's definitely a stream. It's mapped.
Further down. You can walk down the street and see the stream. It runs through my brother Al's property.
I know where the stream is coming out.
You've been around a while. You even know where the stream is.
Well, this is hydrologically connected.
This gentleman's been around a while. This gentleman's been around a while too. He probably walked those railroad tracks when he was younger.
It's hydrologically connected. It's hydrologically connected.
It's two acres, it's two acre lots down here from my property. Two acre lots down here.
It's, there's a wetland.
That's not, not even a point. Everyone else.
And that's standing, that's standing water down at the deep end.
You should, you've been on our property.
That's standing water down at the deep end. My brother Al, my brother Al.
Not, well, I.
There's two people talking, I'm, I'm, I'm down.
Do you know where my brother Al lives?
Who?
Albert, my brother Albert.
Albert Enos.
Two houses down from my, from the hillbilly. Going down to Hart Street. The state put a drain pipe in there.
Yes, I know where the drain is.
That goes down into the ditch, down into the railroad tracks.
Yes, it does.
That's what's causing that buildup of water down there.
And it runs down into Hart Street.
And eventually, eventually soaked it to the ground, down to the stream, down into the river. Yeah. That's where the stream is. You know where the stream is. I'm trying to tell this lady, she doesn't, tell him, believe. She don't wanna believe.
I've seen it. I walked out there. I may not have been there thirty years ago.
She's not saying stream. She's saying it's in the rec- it's in the resource center.
But I guess our question is, what's the commission looking for and, you know, does it wanna work with you, but?
I mean, we've paid taxes on this project for sixteen, sixteen, you would pay taxes. We haven't been able to utilize it. Everybody else has filled it in. They can utilize their property. I, I plan on leaving this to my children. We put out on being here for another ninety-something years.
Wait, wait.
You know what I'm saying?
Are you, are you looking to fill it?
Fill it, the rest of the area.
And just, just when I was on the day, it just buried.
It's just all.
Okay, wait, what are you showing?
You would expect, I, I, I would say, oh, yeah, that's, that's a great idea.
Mr. Pavel said this was all.
I saw it. I don't know where it starts, but we're dancing.
That's later, a couple years ago.
What, what's?
Used to say, all we wanna do is bring it up to the natural level, then it was before the railroad dug it up. That's it.
Before what?
The railroad dug it up. That's all I'm doing. Bringing it up to natural basis. That's what everybody else did up on me. He is a dog, trying to stop me.
The, the.
You finally let him fill it in. He filled it in. He totally filled it in, you guys aren't filling it.
He had an area in his yacht that he's going, and I didn't. He's saying it's not. When his people talk, I can hear you.
All I wanna do is put in what he has.
I can understand. There were multiple violations on that stream.
Problem materials have to be put into it from now on.
There's more than one violation, not just yours, but yours was the one that someone notified us on, so we need to follow up.
Yeah, you know, I know notified one. It's the man behind us because.
I talked to the guy.
He was dumping on our land and we stopped him and he cut ass.
There was two full cars, two full cars.
None of that matters. We talked about it. It doesn't matter.
It matters in this sense. I mean, if we have to report, but he also has fill on his land, correct? And they were out there.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can check on his property next.
Again, my clients, you know, they're in their seventies. They wanna straighten this out, but.
And so we, I would say, we determine where this, where the wetland flag is on, right? Determine that.
There's no flagging. I'm not gonna flag it.
No, check where this wetland is and see the, the extent of this.
We need a survey, just like with leads.
I would do a survey and see the extent of this.
There's about thirty feet of fill.
I'm hoping for a lawyer, because I didn't wanna come in here and be pushed around, alright?
You don't wanna be pushed around.
Right, I didn't wanna be, because you come up with all these paperwork, all these, uh, uh, violation is, violation, I, I'm looking at this shit.
So you're, 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 you're looking for, hey, we filled it with, uh, debris and stuff again, now we just wanna fill it on, on top of that.
Two thousand twenty-one.
Oh, yeah, that's excellent idea, sir.
Everybody else on here now.
It's two thousand.
Talking to everybody.
We can work on, we can work on them next.
We will go, you make a complaint, we'll go to the next site. But right now, we're dealing with this. You're on the agenda, sir.
What is it you're looking for? And we'll see.
Removal of the debris.
Okay, all the debris?
No, no, we need a plan. We don't want removal because we, next thing you know, he's gonna be in there tomorrow. We need a plan, a survey plan that shows the extent of the fill, the topography, existing topography, and a B B W flagged by a wetland scientist. That's what we.
So we know what the, what the, what the resource center is.
What the resource center, what do you call the resource center?
Look, the Clean Water Act's been existed so busy here. You don't wanna, you don't wanna agree with us. You don't have to. We are here to regulate the wetlands.
No, I'd like to agree with you. I'd like to agree with you. How's that?
We're here to regulate the wetlands, protect the wetlands. You don't have to like it, because it's not, it wasn't wetland until anyone else.
It's created by the state. It's created by the state in there.
It took everyone else to close it in.
Is it created?
The state created it?
Creates it with that drain pipe.
Two things have created it.
Well, you can say anything you want. We, we don't, that was more, that happened, it was.
Tried to manage to run off of one thirty-eight.
I'm a fighter. I'm ready to rain.
You would like to call the state, so you think if D E P went there and they saw what you had back there, they would, they would be alright with that?
They have to make, well, like I said, if you make me dig it out, you're gonna make everybody up above me from Hart Street.
I'm not asking you to take it out.
You just say remove it. You just say remove it.
Listen, this is an Army Corps federal violation. I'm not.
You're not getting Army Corps engineers here.
Anything over than five thousand square feet. This is much bigger than the town of Dayton. This is much bigger than five thousand square feet.
Yeah, did, did you use the computer to, uh, uh, what I had, I, I, I was pacing it when he, uh, interrupted me and prevented me from continuing pacing.
What did you come up with hypothetically?
Uh, it was a hundred by, uh, at least fifty, at lea- and then I, I was stopped, but, and then it's about thirty feet deep.
And I want this one to represent private property. You wanna come up on my property, you got my phone number, you have my email address, you contact me. You don't trespass on my property. It's a violation of my rights and American citizens.
Is the railroad your property?
It's my property.
I'll tell you.
On the way up to Stonewall.
I have authority to walk on your property. I'm not saying I'm going to, but I do because I have the authority as a conservation.
Notify me first.
Okay, but if we can just, what's the commission looking for? I'll talk to my clients.
Uh, Li- Lisa will inform you.
We, we just, we just said it. Kevin just said it. Uh, survey.
We're looking for a survey.
Survey.
No, that would have, that's what I would look for. I'm not a, I'm not a, but I would say a survey to determine.
We'll make the topography and then the wetland flagging, and we'll take it from there.
Because I think that's what the board has done consistently in the past.
Yeah.
So you're, if you have a survey.
You have, you have someone come in and identify.
If you have a survey where the standing water is down in there, they're gonna say, oh, yeah, this is wetland, it's, I mean, it's water down here. You know, I know. I know. I've been through. I own property on the ocean down in, in Haiti. I've been on. You know, I know, I know, I've been through, I own property on the ocean down in, in Haiti, I've been on through to the land. That is caused by.
They're gonna check hydraulic, the soil itself, then I just say, rain, that's the one rainstorm, they're gonna look and say, that's a wetland, no, they're not gonna do it like that, they're gonna determine.
I know, it's like.
They're gonna, by vegetation, by soils.
Frogs, vegetation, blah, 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 blah.
Hey, you know, you can badmouth us all that you want, uh, right now, right now, uh, what we're looking for is.
My family's in this, in this, in this, oh, post a name something years, and when I said, we bought this from the town, no restrictions of that property, we bought back in the sixties. Read the deed, no restrictions about that deed, town couldn't say, you couldn't fill it in, don't fill it in now, you can't do it.
Well, it's wetlands, you can't fill it.
Probably with the bylaw that shows you that you can't do it.
Yeah, right.
It's on the town website, do you need a copy, I can give you a copy.
Okay.
Okay, I can't fill it in, I'm ready. Why you did it, why you else?
You can't fill in wetlands, whether it's a right of.
Let's go even back to Joe Waters.
You said, you said there's more than just, you said it was an old dumpster.
It was an old, my father used to bring the rubbish to the restaurant.
Yeah, and then you said other people, other people, other people have been dumping there, we didn't know about it, how do you, what do you know, what's in there that you don't know, if you don't know what they were doing?
This is only just a patch here.
You said you didn't know what was in there?
I said, my father, back in the forties.
No, she said, oh, you were dumping in there, now we know, now we know they were dumping, that they were dumping in, what were they dumping, sir? You don't even know.
They were dumping tree stumps, they were dumping.
Concrete, right?
Concrete, yeah, stones.
Nothing mixed in with the concrete, just concrete?
Concrete, you want.
Right, they don't do a lot of padding or stuff like.
Dumping, dumping tree stumps is illegal, it's be, uh, that in itself is considered a hazardous waste, as it decomposes. So essentially, you're, you're, has this waste in there?
Solid waste.
They don't have solid waste, because.
Well, we can take care of that in the future, right now, we're dealing with you.
I, I guess, couple questions I have, we got the stormwater on Wednesday, I believe, at one. I mean, who do we work with, both the commission and the stormwater, I mean?
I'll be in attendance at the meeting.
All right, well, only because for my client, it gets expensive and it could be differing opinions on the two boards, so. Um, if Lisa's there, let us meet with them and then, you know, talk to my clients, this commission would like to serve their correct to start, let's see what stormwater wants to do, I don't know what their condition to be. And then we can talk, or some, and decide on what to do, so.
Stormwater's meeting next week, the twenty first.
Yeah, Wednesday at one o'clock.
If you call.
Like I said, everybody's going above me, where's the water gonna go?
Call.
Yeah, some, guessing somewhere.
Call and get on the agenda.
We're already on, we're all set, yeah. Now, they've notified us about the meeting on Wednesday, so we'll be there. All right, and we'll stay in touch with Lisa about, if we have the meeting anyways.
I'll be there, yeah.
And I'll talk to my clients. Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
County Street, two forty, twenty forty County Street, DeRosa. Got an update on that one, Lisa?
No, unfortunately. He hasn't responded.
Can't hear you, Lisa.
He has not responded, the last time I talked about this was, um. What's his name, Brett Zaloffus, Zaloffus notified me that Mr. DeRosa had reached out to him and asked him what he could do, because he couldn't comply with conservation. Um, so I'm hitting a stone wall with this one. But I, as I understand, he's owes back taxes, there's other problems on that site?
Yeah.
Um, can we, can I ask that you make a motion to skip ahead to the next, um, oh, Wheeler's?
How about this gentleman?
Yeah, let's, let's.
Can I come back on the twenty ninth after all that?
That meeting's booked, all right?
Two for two.
Yeah, did you bring the plan with you?
No, I did not, Brad, I didn't know we had something.
What's your name and your?
Bob Sauce.
Bob Sauce?
Yes, soil sanitation.
Bob is here because, I don't know if you recall, SFG Associates.
They put a septic system in it, it was sixteen oh five years.
Sixteen.
SFG came before us, and I made him modify the plan, and I said, you're in a riverfront and a B, near the BBW, access the septic replacement. I said, you've gotta access on the other side of the house.
On the west side of it.
The west side, so they redid the plan, and we approved it, um, showing the access on the other side, temporary access, well, apparently, there was, go ahead.
There was ledge there, and there's drainage under the road on that side of the home.
A couple of us, a couple, a, a, a couple of us have trouble hearing.
Yes, there, there was ledge for us to get through with the tank truck, and to get through with the trucks to dig it, so we didn't go on that side, and there's drainage underneath over there, worried about. So when I went up to the site, I didn't realize it was drawn up, because Brad had drawn it up and brought it to you people.
Who drew it up?
Brad Fitzgerald, um, SFG, so I in turn went out and looked at the site with my guys and said, why don't we just come this way around the other side here? Um, through here we went, down into there, um, we had.
They moved this erosion control to get on the other side.
We had the erosion control right here, we went on the other side, Doug got the job done, got everything done, it's all loomed now, it just needs to be seeded. I just didn't seed it because of the rain and the heavy rain, so I waited to hydroseed, I usually hydroseed when I'm done. We removed the erosion control, went in and then put the erosion control back, now nothing got disturbed. We added, I had talked to Lisa, we added the erosion control all the way up to the side of the driveway up here.
There is a disturbance below the, where we let the limited disturbance, and now there's a huge puddle on the driveway.
There's a puddle from the driveway, that's always there, those people say.
Take me down the street and tell me where this is.
Right out of the river.
This is Whale Street.
Yeah, I know.
The river's right here.
Well, where is this on Wheeler?
South side of Wheeler.
South side.
The river's right here, segregate it.
Oh, okay.
And we went into over here, so, and we put it back, and I put the extra erosion and extra stakes along the erosion on this side.
So we need more than just hydroseeding, like, we need some, well, we need some conservation seed mix, and I can show you where.
Wherever you want it, you tell me where you wanna go, I'll, I'll address the problem.
I'm, I'm not blaming him.
No, but.
Completely, but someone should have told me.
Yes, I would have gladly met you out there, didn't even realize it was that much of a condition with Brad, I just went out there and said, you guys, we can't go with these people, drainage, we had to put the trill, it dips down.
Did Brad give you this?
Brad gave us our plan, it was like this, though.
This plan, okay, so yeah, so that's the other problem, Brad Fitzgerald gave him the plan that the border house approved, which was different from this.
Yes.
So I don't, I don't understand how the lines.
Where's the Gusterson property?
This is, um, Vitello.
So what they approved from us, then Brad.
This was, um.
Gusterson is way down, Gusterson is nineteen.
Vitello.
Now, where's the Gusterson property from here?
From here, way down.
Way down, like a mile.
Way down, yeah.
Oh, further south.
No, further, further west.
East.
It's right here, the location's right here.
East, right? East, because the west, yeah, because I was supposed to go in on the west side.
Gusterson's is over here.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yes.
All right, now I know where you are.
So you're, what are you, sixteen hundred, and Gusterson is around two thousand?
Sixteen oh five. Well, the numbers are messed up there.
Sixteen oh five.
It goes seventeen something, and then it goes to sixteen oh five, because they didn't expect to put those loads into this, where they did. But I'll do whatever, I'll meet this right there, and we'll do whatever needs to be done to address the problem.
Yeah. You know, it's just, it just thinks that we.
Miscommunication.
Yeah.
That's all, and I'm sorry for it, but it's miscommunication, we got the job done, everything's done, the people are happy, we just got that, you know, we can resolve this area. We'll put down whatever you wanna do, I just wanna get in, we're gonna go in between here and hydroseed all this, once I get it addressed, I just wanna wait until it's cleaned up.
Very good.
The trees that were cut, are they in a wetland?
Trees?
No trees.
No trees?
No trees.
Oh, should, which one are we dealing with?
That's the wrong one.
Ten thirty five?
No, we're not on ten thirty.
Sixteen oh five.
Sixteen oh five, we are, they skipped one, they skipped here, we gotta go back to this.
We skipped over, because he's.
All right.
So next, cut on the next.
Yeah, I think, um, conservation mix, you can get from the wetland plant, but I can show you where, but I don't want it turning into a mowed lawn, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm gonna, of course, this one more time, I said.
You show us where we go.
She works three from hours a week, not twenty four seven.
Yeah.
Don't email her or call her.
Down, there are any disturbance in here, and then the rest, I just seed it.
You too? You too.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
Well, then, then you're guilty.
Okay.
Twenty seven, I mean, if, if you gotta create taxes, I'm like.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's upsetting, you know, what I learned from this, is that, in the future, I'm gonna make sure I give copies of our permits to the border house.
So what is this one here? Cut trees? Hmm? What's his problem? It was, it was a grass area, and they went into the, uh, buffer zone too far.
Yeah, what do you do for, yes, just so I'm curious, when I worked in Lakewood, conservation would go out, do a quick, they would go out first, see the barriers in place.
Yeah, I did that.
And then when I was out there.
I did that, it was a limited disturbance, so I said, great, they know where this was from.
Yeah. And as hell days, when I'm out there, and I was looking, I was like, oh, why is that fence down, whatever it was, and all along, we'll put it back up, or whatever was, was toppled or whatever, we worked in tandem, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we'll address it.
Okay.
Okay, we can fix that, that's no problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, when would you like to meet out there to go, and?
Um.
Give me a date, a time, if you wanna call me or email me, I can, I can, yeah.
Monday? Okay.
You tell me whatever time it is, and I'd like to go over, let's, let's address it, um, this is no rain coming, you're right.
Oh, God, yes, I, I get frustrated this weekend.
It is, yeah.
You still want to have the twenty ninth, for the heck of it? If I gotta be here, you gotta be here.
Yeah, why don't we say, uh.
One of the last hostels.
Yeah, right, why don't we say Monday at, um, one o'clock?
Okay.
Okay. Yep.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone, have a good night, thank you.
Good night.
So that's all the big deal thing.
William Street, DEP number oh one seven oh four oh three. Letter issued, April twenty eighth, update soon, Lisa?
Yeah, gotta write this down before I forget.
This is the house across from Under the Sun?
Yeah, diagonally across, so the gentleman is pretty annoyed, he doesn't under, you know, he, he doesn't understand how he was able to build his garage, and he thought he was pulling the necessary permits. He built his garage, um, the site, and I'm not positive if it's still open or not, but it had an order of conditions from you guys. The, the property's new, I think only a year old, the house, maybe two years, um, TLC built it. See if I have. Here it is. So I believe he still has an open order of conditions, um, it was recorded. Well, eighteen, the order was condition, it was, order of conditions were recorded in, um, August of two thousand eighteen, um.
So, okay, so that's three years now.
Yeah, so. The, what he did was, I think I told you guys at the last meeting, instead of hiring, um, Outback to do the survey for his garage that he wanted to add on after he moved in. He hired another company, and the other company put the wetland line in a different location than Outback had, so the order of conditions showed the wetland line here. But the engineer that designed his garage showed it over here, so he showed them all outside of any regulated area. Now, here we are, he built the garage, two bay lodge garage, um, that requires an access and turnaround kind of area in the twenty five foot. In the meantime, it's also cleared in the tree line, and I told him to stop, he stopped immediately, he's been cooperative so far, he actually went and he hired Outback to come back and said, you need the wetlands. The flags re-hum, and the easiest thing to do is hire Outback, because they had the proper line, and you also need to mark the twenty five foot, so we know where your twenty five foot no touches. Um, so he says he's really nervous because twenty five, he's, thinks he's definitely within the twenty five foot with his garage, um, maybe I should sue the town, and I said, don't go that way.
Sue the other builder who moved the flags?
No, nobody moved flags.
That's what you said in the beginning.
No.
The new contractor.
The new contractor had a different delineation done, didn't go on the, the.
Oh, wow, that's moving them, without approval.
In any, any case, this is, it's building something without approval, however, what Mr. Martin said to me was, he contacted Jim Aguirre and, and in an email and said, I'm new to this, and I need to know, what I need to do to build a garage. And he's anno, Mr. Martin says he's annoyed because he doesn't understand how it got to this point, and Conservation Commission didn't review it, and he didn't, you know, take the necessary steps. However, it's always on the applicant in my head, it's not, you know, we shouldn't.
He didn't come to us.
He didn't come to us, it, it, you know, um, and yes, his engineer should have said, you may have a conservation issue, not just assume that he didn't, it's a brand new house, um, with recorded conditions. I don't know if he ever got a certificate of compliance for the house, did he?
Don't think so.
Yeah, so he's got an open order, and the building department issued a new permit for a garage, which makes me, I don't understand how this happens.
Because we don't have the.
Just talking, not that.
Yeah, because we, I don't know, we, something to look down on the road, so there's like checks and balances.
Yeah.
Because these things can happen, because one is not.
So now we're trying to fix the situation, and I certainly do not want him to pull the garage out.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I'm not gonna make him do that, but he needs to be able to get in and out of this garage, which might require more cutting. In any case, he marked, you know, Outback re-hung the flags, he marked the twenty five foot no touch, and we're, we're actually gonna go out to the, I'm gonna go visit the site.
But there's a fifty foot no build.
Fifty foot no build, he's definitely in that, so he's suggested that he may be, he's definitely interested in cooperating with us, um, and I can work with him. The area he cut, the trees he cut below it is all coming back, because he didn't fill, and he didn't, you know, remove any dirt in there. So that's where we're at with that. I think we can get some mitigation on it, um, there's an area on the site, I think we can require some more planting, unless you guys can think of anything else you want for mitigation?
You said you're going back on the site, the next week, you said?
Yeah, I'm gonna go meet him next week, that's what we decided today, um. Here's the next move, the twenty five foot will be staked tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow meeting Friday, what day next week is good to meet you? Um, my lawyer told me to relax, I'm getting worked up too soon, and told me, let's try to work things out, so I'm, that's what I'm gonna do. The twenty five foot will be staked tomorrow, and hopefully next week, we can meet up to go over it, I gotta schedule that.
What's that?
But if anybody wants to go check it out, yeah.
Well, just let, let me know when, when it is, uh, not Monday.
Okay. Okay, no, Monday's pretty busy, um, so maybe Tuesday or Wednesday, let's look, Wednesday.
Well, you know, I, I'm not gonna give anything definite yet, but, uh, but, but, but I know it's definitely not Monday.
Okay.
Or Friday, or you're not here Friday anyway.
That's easy, yeah.
We received an email about unauthorized cutting on a conservation land off Walker Street.
Yeah, did you talk directly with him?
I did, I went down and looked, I didn't see any cutting, there's no.
Well, there's a path, it's mowed.
Huh?
There's a mowed path in the back.
Yeah, there's a, a, a cut path from, from Walker Street, heading east all the way down into the property, I didn't see any new cutting at all.
It's, it's, yeah, it's heading west, but, yeah, so that's mowed, that's a town property that's been mowed by one of the neighbors. But then if you go down, it cuts off and goes to the south towards, cause Tom Ferry and I walked it on Monday in the rain, Tweety's property?
Oh, I don't know, I'm not talking about Tweety yet.
Tweety, Tweety, Tweety?
There was a two and a half acre piece next to, uh, the teacher. Brian Bashron, I slept.
Yeah, Brian wrote the letter and he said, um.
What was that, so?
He, he says, good morning, uh, no, good evening, I'm interested in the work that's slowly occurring on the Segregated Estates Conservation Area off of Walker Street. Tracked tires and tracks, evidence of raking and vegetation removal have occurred on the road from Walker Street that leads into the main portion of the conservation area. As in a butter, I am interested in the work that the town is conducting, I appreciate your time, thank you, Brian Bastarachi, Bastarachi? At one six six Walker Street. So I responded, thank you for being a good steward and notifying us, I visited the site with Tom Ferry yesterday and we'll be discussing this with the commission. If you'd like to be in attendance, this meeting at seven P M. we'll be discussing the item toward the end of the meeting, if you prefer, the meetings will be recorded by cable and will be shown on YouTube. Um, so, I think this is just something where we should monitor, maybe I should write a letter to the landowner there?
Is that the property that runs behind the houses on Walker Street?
It's a new owner. Yeah.
It has no access to Walker Street?
There's a house.
The conservation land?
Uh, this conservation land has access on Walker.
Is that where the Terrys live too?
I'll have to show you. I don't know who lives there.
I only walked down, Lisa, I only walked down that cop path until I got to a dead tree that was cross, was across the road.
Okay.
And I, and I didn't go any further than that.
Yeah. Um, one sixty-six, will you? No, Walker.
What number, Walker?
Well.
One six six.
The Bastarachi is at one sixty-six Walker Street. See here. Oh, I didn't know, okay. I love my iPad, by the way. Okay, so.
But that's when you could scroll down like that, huh?
Yeah, it's nice, so this is the conservation area here, and this is where Mr. Brian, Brian the Teacher lives, right here. This is the conservation area in Segregated Estates. Um, but the cutting is being, uh, that's occurring, is just a cutting of a path, hopefully not for A T Vs. And then there's a path here above the stream, but it's right near the property line and I feel like it might have been this new owner, Tom was saying it's a new owner. Here, sorry.
I didn't see, I, I walked down in there, I didn't see any new cutting.
It's a shooting path.
It's just a path.
I know it's just a path, and, and it looked like someone had driven down from Walker and took a left into this neighbor's property.
I did. Mm-hmm.
You know, they were broken, there was a lot of big pine branches down there that were broken, like somebody ran over them with a tractor. But I didn't see anything other than, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, some broken branches that were laying on the ground originally, and somebody ran over them and broke them.
Okay, well, I just saw.
But I didn't see, I didn't see any disturbance of, of anything.
It's not in a wetland.
No.
It's, it's, it's outs, it's probably outside the twenty-five foot, but it's within the riverfront.
Yep.
But in any case, I think we just gotta monitor it and, um, literally, uh, right before the stream or before the river. The path ends, you can't get, go any further, right?
Where is the cutting taking place?
Um, along this path and somewhere in.
Ah, okay, between the two properties.
Yeah, and somewhere in here, it's just a path, it's not like cutting trees.
Boy, so they, they're running a John Deere over it or something.
It's kind of, it's more narrow than what Tom does. So. You know, I mean, what do you guys wanna do?
They're not cutting trees, just cutting grass, I don't, I don't see any problem, uh, unless we see tire tracks.
It's not just grass, though, it's understory, but yeah.
Nice to put a conservation sign right outside the driveway.
Yeah, we should get some, do you have any conservation signs, Bill? Do we have any conservation signs we can put out there?
Geez, I took a picture of one I saw.
Tree, tree department, the tree department, highway department make signs.
And it really looked.
They do?
I think Tommy does, yeah.
Tommy?
Yeah, he, he, I don't know, or, or he buys them somewhere.
Okay. All right, I'll talk to him about. Um, do you wanna talk about the dues for N A C C and all?
This is in Rehoboth on Reservoir Avenue.
That, that's good for even people to put on their property.
Come on, Charlie.
Sure. Charlie.
That's pretty.
Okay, where, where are you focusing?
Well, if you keep it away, I've got three, three ranges here, you're going from one to the other.
That's Rehoboth, he said, Reso, oh. Reservoir Avenue. Okay.
Right.
Yeah, now you're cooking.
But I mean, we need like conservation, that's conservation land, so we need conservation land signs, does Tom have some of those?
Day in conservation, protected land.
Yeah.
Day in conservation, protected land.
Yes, I like that.
All right.
Okay, we need to discuss Brook Street solar array.
Oh, yeah, we need to.
Lisa.
Oh, boy, yeah, save the best for last, I guess, um.
Oh, it's not last, there's one more to cook.
Okay, I'm gonna take a nap first, um, I did a routine inspection out there, um, yesterday.
No, that's a.
Just to take some pictures of the stormwater controls and see what's going on, and as I walked towards the site from east to west on Brook. I looked over the left and I noticed there's chocolate water coming from the site, muddy, muddy water. And I went, oh, great, there's like six guys standing around, nobody's doing anything. So I yell over, hey, you know, you got a problem here, and, uh, they all kind of looked at me and I said, yeah, you, you're creating. There's a violation here and you need to fix it, and, um, so they came over and I, I showed them, I said, this is illegal for you to have. Um, stormwater running off site with, um, you know, with mud, oh, that's just muddy water, you know, they're from the south, most of those guys. I said, well, it's muddy water until it turns into pollution and you guys have permits that you're supposed to be adhering to, including a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Um, so I contacted Todd and I contacted Tom and what I ended up having them do is take two sections of their quarry, eighteen inch quarry log. Across, not the stream, cause the stream's not really flowing from that direction, the water's sheet flowing across the site. Entire eight acres completely cleared now, and they've got no stormwater basins in yet because they said it's been too wet. Um, so that's the problem. The water found its way underneath the really heavy eighteen inch quarry logs and made a channel and was discharging. So, I asked for the woman who was on the site last time I was there and she wasn't there, and I was told that the new woman from Oracle, Oracle, who's doing the inspections. Is a project manager, so I called her over and I asked her if she inspected the erosion controls and she said, well, we, we've been doing that, but. Um, yeah, what, I don't really know what I'm supposed to do, does the county offer any training on that, and I went, you're supposed to be the inspector. So I pointed to the box we asked them to keep with the plans and the permits, and I said, you need to know what's in that. And you need to know what it says because you could be fined a lot of money every day if you don't, between stormwater compliance and conservation. Um, so Nancy Doar, um, Tom Ferry, Todd Pillling and I all met on site with them today. And went over the fact that this isn't good, I'm gonna get some more rain. Um, so, apparently, the woman, she called me this afternoon and said she found out where she could get a little training. She's concerned what's gonna happen next, are you guys gonna shut us down, and I said, if it doesn't get rectified. Basically, what, what the bottom line and what ended up happening was Todd suggested, of course, the crew that was on site was not anyone that would. Wasn't even a stormwater control inspection person today. It was just the crew, so there was no project manager to talk to. So Todd suggested, hey, you guys gotta put some temporary sediment basins in here, if you can't build your long-term structural, you know, long-term basis. Put some temporary ones, put some check dams, and then what I had suggested will help if they add some. Um, however. Todd had a great idea, hey, let's go back to the engineer, the engineer should be the one directing them, contact the engineer, tell him what he needs to do.
Yeah.
So they gave it him till Tuesday to complete it, and if they don't complete it by Tuesday, Wednesday, it's gonna be on the stormwater agenda to, and they'll take it from there. It's a violation, it's, I, I asked the crew, I said, how long do you think it's been muddy like this, since the storm? Oh, yeah, probably.
Okay.
So that's that.
Okay, so you're all, you're kind of set with that then as far as through Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday, we're gonna do an inspection, so.
Lisa, we need to change the last sentence of our bylaw.
Okay. Why is that, what is the last sentence?
It says, it currently says, said fees for said services shall be set forth in a, in a regulation.
Okay, so this one here, that one says future, this one here says it has been adopted.
That's what it should be changed to. This is what went before the town meeting and they approved.
Yeah.
Now it.
Uh, section three.
It has been approved.
It has been approved.
Section three?
So now it has been approved, so, so you're saying.
I'm saying that. The wording needs to be changed to show that we have approved that.
Okay, all right, I, I got it.
And we have approved, we voted at a meeting.
Yes, it has, okay, by vote, the commission on April, okay.
So then we have to go.
It's a very basset last sentence.
The special town meeting?
No, it's already been, but so, but the other one says to be approved, and that's what people voted on. Now it's saying in the bylaw that it has been approved April fifteenth.
Yeah, and, and they've inserted the change in our, our ordinance, but not just verbatim from the wording on the town meeting. It's been approved, we approved it at a meeting in April, uh, and it needs to show that, so that if another Bishop Hasen comes in and looks at it, it's not gonna try to stick it up our poop.
Okay, so, all right, so that's, um, so that's about five words.
That's all.
But how do you do, how do you go about that?
Just change it.
Do you go to the town clerk?
Yeah, we gotta, it's gonna have to go to a meeting.
We could ask the town clerk how that work.
Yeah, he's probably gonna email the state and find out.
Have to change a, uh, because it was voted, if you could just, yeah, put it that way.
Yeah.
Not too big, it is.
I get it.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, you know, uh, before we adjourn, I just wanna remind everyone, Lisa works Monday through, uh, Thursday, twenty-five hours a week. I know she gets calls all times, Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays and holidays and her days off. Um, that's really quite unfair to her, we have to be very cautious unless, unless something. That truly can't wait, but I think most things can wait.
That means no more emails, no more texts.
Well, you know, I, I, I'm just looking out, I mean, hey, I don't wanna see Lisa get burnt out and, and run away on us.
She does a job above and beyond, no question about it.
That's what could happen, she'd get burnt out.
Sorry?
That's what could happen, she'd get burnt right out.
I know, I, I mean, once in a while, I get something, you, and, and Lisa, don't send them to us either.
On the weekends, texting and stuff.
Unless you really, unless you really want to.
If I make something, I send it, but, um, sometimes it's the wrong time, you know, but, yeah. No, I mean, uh, you know.
Because, because, because that might encourage, uh, one of us to, uh.
We have one more thing to, one more issue to deal with. We have, uh, a bill from MAC.
If there's nothing else.
Oh, MAC.
Nothing else, I'll, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
That needs to get paid. We're not gonna adjourn yet.
Go ahead.
Because we have one more item to take care of.
I say if there's nothing else.
I make a motion that we pay our MAC dues of two hundred ninety-three dollars even.
Well, do you wanna add anyone to that? We didn't, we are organized, so if we get new members, when is that due, cause we might wanna wait until we know.
I just had fifteen dollars, oh. Do we have Kevin on here?
No.
Hi.
Do you wanna be?
No, we've been cheating MAC, we have an associate member we have to pay up. So that's not right.
Yeah, so it says what to do.
Do they have to know that?
Yeah, you have to add the member on there.
What about the other individual that wants to be a partner?
Right, so when is that due?
Oh, you got associate member, so the two ninety-three covers them. No?
How many people is listed?
It shows five members and one associate mem- member.
Oh, okay, but what if we get a?
That's what it shows.
What if we get a new person?
So, the two hundred ninety-three covers six of us.
What if we get a new person?
Let's not worry about it until we get it.
Well, when is that due, can we wait? Is, is it due this month? When is it due? What does it say? Due is, oh, it's already due, wait, July first to, oh, that's the new fiscal year.
Just do it now and then, we don't know what's gonna happen with an individual.
Okay.
It doesn't show it up yet.
Okay. All right.
We can see how many meetings we have and then not decide to do it.
All right.
All the extra.
Two hundred ninety-three will do.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, make the motion then, Charlie.
I did.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. I move that we adjourn at nine fifty.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.